Everyone, welcome to the July 18th meeting of the Hyde Park Planning Board. Please take note of the exits around the room and now join us as we praise the American flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. At the outset, I'd like to take care of one small housekeeping item. This will be our esteemed colleague, Chan Murphy's, last meeting. I can't believe I'm saying that still. Mr. Murphy has sold his house and is going to relocate to Florida. We wish him the very best. We'll be doing more toward the end of the meeting, but I just wanted to make sure everyone knew. Chan, it's been great serving with you all this time. Thank you so much.
(applause).
I'm glad Chan is the longest-serving member up here at 14 years. And that's between his time on the town board, et cetera, that's a heck of a lot of service to our community. So, thank you again. The first item on the agenda is a new public hearing for Berry Bed and Breakfast. This is a previously approved site plan located at 4331 Albany Post Road. It's basically a decaying, bad-looking house that's going to be transformed into a bed and breakfast, we hope. The applicant had applied for a building permit prior to the deadline. We had to start construction. There were some issues going along with that. It's now been resolved, but they made a timely request for the extension. So first, would anyone from the public like to speak about this application?
Can we open the public hearing?
Yep. Can we open the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Thank you, Vice Chair. Would anyone like to speak about this application? Any comments from the consultants? Any comments from the board who has this resolution?
I do. Town of Hyde Park Planning Board, resolution to grant site plan approval, Berry Bed and Breakfast, July 18th, 2018, Resolution Number 16-38C. Whereas, 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 now therefore be resolved that the Planning Board hereby grants the request for an extension of time to begin substantial construction and the two years to complete through July 18th, 2019, and July 18th, 2020, respectively.
Second.
Before we go, I make it a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? And now may votes for the resolution, all in favor?
Aye.
Any abstain or deny? Motion carries. Thank you. The next item is a new public hearing for a very exciting project for us. This is a Saki brewery. Location is 5 St. Andrews Road, but more familiarly to residents, you'll know it as the former Stop &amp; Shop that has not exactly sat empty. We've had some various retail uses since it relocated across the street, including fireworks, retail sales of Halloween costumes, and a few other items.
Car shows.
Car shows, as just this past weekend by the Chamber. We've workshopped this extensively. I might add that the applicants in the workshop meetings have been very, to me, generous in terms of responding with changes to the site plan that incorporate aspects of our code. Particularly, I'd like to point out what a nice job they've done on the sidewalks, the bollard lighting, bike racks, landscaping. I can go on, but the applicants will be making a presentation for the public shortly. Welcome back, Mr. Zaren. Is there anything you'd like to add?
Hi. Good evening, Board and staff. Michael Zaren from law firm Zaren &amp; Steinmetz, on behalf of the applicant, Asasishuso. Before, make a short presentation to open up the public hearing, and we'll try to keep it short because we've already done a number of these, including one at the last public meeting. I just wanted to share with the Board what, for some of you that are not aware of what's been happening in Japan over the last month or so, a couple of weeks, this has hit, this flooding, right exactly where the Asasishuso plant is, southwest. Over 100 people died in the flooding. Asasishuso has got hard hit by this. It is completely closed at the moment. I brought an article just to share with the Board if I could.
And I've been sending updates to the Board. I should have opened this by saying that our hearts, our sympathies are with the owners. I believe it's $14 million worth of damage thus far, as well as loss of lives, and the plant, as I understand it, will be closed for at least six weeks to two months before any kind of production can begin.
Correct, and appreciate, and we will convey that directly to the clients. Because of the, because of the conditions, catastrophic conditions down there, to be perfectly blunt, it has been hard getting the company to focus and concentrate the last couple of weeks. I know there were a number of comments. We prepared the response letter of July 2nd, but since then, it's really been difficult to get them to focus. So, I would ask your indulgence, this Board's indulgence, happy to take back any comments that you might have and try to, when and if, we can get their focus, hopefully in the next couple of weeks. It will be difficult for us, at this point, to make the type of representations and responses that we would, we've tried to be. We've tried to be responsive in a timely manner, so I would, I would just ask for your indulgence. We are not in the position today to perhaps answer some of your questions, and we will do it immediately once we get them to focus. They are, I should emphasize, they are still committed to the project, 100% committed to the project. They have made that clear to us. Just, it's, it's difficult at the moment. This flood hit right there.
Let me assure you, we'll do all we can to be as cooperative as you need us to be. We're just happy that many of them, that they've survived and that they're still interested in moving here to Hyde Park.
Okay, we appreciate that. Thank you. With respect to a brief introduction for those in the audience, or that might be here from the public to speak at the, at the public hearing, as this Board knows, the Asasishuso proposal is to create a high-quality Saki brewing facility, tasting room, compliant with all the town codes and historic district. This has been a site that has been vacant, as you and most of the public knows, 15-acre site, for a number of years. The proposal will be to employ approximately 40 persons at the site, $26 million approximately in investment. It will involve the production and manufacturing of the highest quality Saki worldwide. This is a 11-generation family that has made the Saki. It will be the first Saki manufacturing facility on the east coast of the United States. The facility, the main, the main facility will not only have the manufacturing, but will also be constructed to provide tours, public tours of the manufacturing operation, which is a long-held, both spiritual and cultural process. It will also have a tasting room and outdoor public facilities and festivals and other community events, and try to invite the public to the facility and to the, to the property on various levels. There is a collaboration with the Culinary Institute to try to broaden the appeal of Saki to the American public, to beyond just combination with certain, certain foods, make it a more broad-based taste. However, Asasishuso will own the facility and will be fully on the, on the tax rolls. Site plan application has been fine-tuned, as you know and you've seen, working with Pelly Clark, the Ngawa, and that will be facing Route 9. The wraparound, the Ngawa wraps around the tasting room. You could see, you had asked for the various renderings to try to provide you with a view of what the roof would look like from the...
Can you take the walk-around microphone, just in case? We're not being picked up? Thank you.
I think you have a turn. Just hold the button, and I mean, pull it once. Push it in, straight on.
Yes?
No.
There we go. There we go.
Thank you.
Okay. Is this one? Okay, so, we, we prepared the three renderings that we think the Board had asked for in the previous. Picture of the Ngawa and what it would look like from a, from a closer perspective, the architecture and the perspective on the roof line and some of the landscaping. There was a discussion as to a rendering on what the rice polishing building would look like from the road. And for those in the public that aren't aware, the rice polishing building will be where the rice will be manufactured and treated and prepared in the preparation of Saki. You only use 23% of the kernel, the actual central part of the kernel of the rice, and it's a very delicate operation. And then, the Board asked for a rendering of, from, again, from the road, from a further distance, of what the, what might be the view, both of the architecture of the building, as well as what the waste treatment plant would look like. The waste treatment plant will not be seen from the road because of the, of the trees. There's also, you can't, you may be able to see, there's sort of a clouded or shaded trees in here. These were meant to at least provide a view, but when these trees are, the current trees are in place, you wouldn't even see, you'd see very little of, of any of this because of the, these trees and landscaping. So, it was put in in a more shaded type of being, but we wanted to give you at least a, a view from closer to the road or further back of what the architecture and the, and the roof line might look like. So, and then for anybody in the public, this is a copy of the site plan, showing the, the parking, the visitor parking, bus lanes and turning that you had asked for, the outdoor facilities, both stages and picnic areas and public, public areas. And we received comments from our associates about possibly including some additional benches and picnic tables and other outdoor improvements. And again, those were the type of questions and issues that we really need to sit down with the client and explore with them in more detail, including many of the comments that were in the, in the memo. So, just thought, give a quick overview, if there's any questions. We have both the architects and the landscape, the architects and the landscape architects and the engineers here. But again, we would ask your indulgence if we can possibly get back to you on some of these at the, at the next meeting.
As I said, granted. Let me start with our consultants. Ms. Axelsson, is there...
Can we open the public hearing?
Make it a motion, open the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Ms. Axelsson, do you want to highlight any of your comments? I know they're extensive.
Yes, and I just want to say I'm sorry to hear about the unfortunate events and the effect on your client. I, I think most of our, our comments are, you know, filling in some of the blanks in terms of addressing Town Center Historic District benches, picnic tables, pointing back to the Planning Board needing to discuss architectural issues. And then there are a few things having to do with traffic circulation, a bus drop-off area, bus turning radii. We did have one comment, we saw that you'd done sort of parking table, but we'd like you to expand that, but one question was 167 spaces are proposed, 136 are required, so one thought is to consider land banking. There are 21 spaces, I think it's on the north side, and the idea was, they're not really central. If they were land-banked or constructed differently, you might not miss them, so that's just a We recommend that you meet with the fire department to see whether they want any kind of striping. And then the lighting plan looks, it looks pretty complete, but we had a little trouble reading, you know, between the two plans, so we've, we have a whole bunch of technical comments for clarification. Also, well, Pete can talk about this, having to do with the bollards on another project that the Planning Board would prefer. Let's see. We also have some comments about the wall that runs along Route 9 needing to be repaired, and also notation about continued maintenance of that wall, and then a question about whether the existing lawn area between the parking areas and St. Andrews Road will be maintained as a lawn or some other landscaped area. I know that we felt we were missing on the elevation sheets, materials, and colors. You have some of the materials, so if you can kind of give us more information on those elevation sheets. And those are the highlights. And I have to say, we had started to do an extensive review and then got your recent submittal, so if you felt like you were waiting for our comments, I guess things kind of worked out time-wise.
Thank you. And typically, we would have, we would have taken your comments and been prepared to respond to them tonight, so we will respond to them as timely manner as we can.
It's still early.
And many of them are, they're all, they all seem, you know, reasonable within the range, so thank you.
I have a quick question. Are you, the landbank, the, are you referring to parking spaces over here, or for land banking purposes? I'm sorry, I would, okay, that, that's already paved, am I correct?
Yes.
So, Liz, are you suggesting that they remove the asphalt and turn that into being green again, or? Normally when we landbank, it's because we request that applicants not do the paving, keep it green first, so it's still pervious, and then if they discover their traffic issues, they then go back in and pave it without needing to come to the Planning Board?
I guess because part of the plan involves removing a significant amount of parking anyway, I thought if there's a way to reduce, you know, the impervious area, that that was a thought. So, yeah, I guess it would involve removing it, or...
That's why, why I was curious.
Replacing it with, with other landscaping, but in such a way that maybe it could be overflow parking, like a gravel lot or something?
What about if you use glass paver, or...
Grass paver?
Grass pavers, in there.
That's another thought.
I mean, it's popular to do over in Asia, you'll see it all the time, big parking lots, whatever, but if they're, if it was for overflow and you use grass pavers, that could be...
I just want the Board to consider that there is the, also notion that there might be cherry blossom festivals and other activities at some point right around here in the staged area. That might be a reason why we wanted to keep extra parking there, I'm not sure.
That's, the thing that wasn't clear to me is why there was more than required parking, and if there's some rationale that the, that the applicant has for wanting more spaces, that I'm sure that they'll present that.
We will discuss it.
Thank you. Ms. Zataro, any comments, other than what you have in the memo, or Asasishuso's memo?
You know, I also want to say that we tried to do a pretty comprehensive review, you know, the first time, first time around, so that we're not coming back with anything like after the fact, so we're really anxious to work, work with you guys, and we'll make ourselves available, you know, whenever that you need us. Just, you know, a couple things. I made the comment on the bollard, bollard lighting. We had the, the sidewalk that you're tying into on the north end, we installed a new sidewalk and bollard lighting, maybe two years ago, there, and we mimicked the bollard lighting that's across the street on the Azarian Plaza. So, we can get you, we'd like for you to look at, you know, the cut sheet, and we'll get that to your office of what we use there, because it probably would be good to try to, you know, continue, you know, the theme up through that area if we can. Let's see, I guess the other thing was, yeah, I want to talk about the wastewater treatment plant in a minute. At our agenda meeting last Friday, we talked about the possibility of Chason's office looking into moving the wastewater plant a little bit north, where it's more behind of the building, there's more of a flatter area there. I don't know if that could be done. I know there's setbacks to adjoining, you know, homeowners' minimum, you know, distances, but the other thing is, it would require a...
Area variance?
An area variance.
To go into the stream corridor?
For the stream, you know, corridor. However, I mean, I think if it meant, if there was the possibility of moving it and it was to everybody's benefit, I can't speak for the zoning board, but I think we would look, you know, like favorably on that, because it does, it would be able, you know, to get it out of the way. And, and I think it'd be a little bit easier, you know, to build versus building it on the steeper slope. So if that's something that you guys can just look into. And, you know, the rest of the stuff in here, you know, I think was just more dot in the i's and crossing, you know, the t's type of stuff. There wasn't anything in here that was major. We're just going to take a look at the stormwater pollution prevention plan. It's been pretty, like, busy. We seem to have a lot of, a lot of SWPs lately, you know, to look at, but I anticipate there to be really any issues at all with this, because it's basically removing, you know, some impervious area, so I, you know, I don't, you know, foresee that to be an issue at all, so...
And the area for everyone up here that we're referring to, to move it from here to somewhere around here, there are homes, Applegate Lane, I think, is over here?
Yeah, we got to be cognizant of that, and there's, you know, setbacks, but again, if it's just something that you guys can look at.
I would certainly look at it more favorably in terms of making a recommendation for the variance, because you, the building would include any, I mean, it's going to be clad in charred wood, so it should blend in. It's got extensive screening in, in the front through the gray versions, but if you could block it completely...
I mean, it's just, you know, when we, when we had looked at the plans, I believe there was a 15-foot-high, you know, wall in front of it, and, I mean, 15 foot's pretty high, and just, you know, to be sticking out there, so if there's an opportunity, you know, to move it...
Actually, my comments, the wastewater treatment plant on Sheet A001 shows 21 feet, 2 inches tall in the circle, and then Sheet A-321 says that it's 15 feet tall.
Oh, that's right.
There's some discrepancies there that just need to be resolved.
So that's it for us.
Thank you. Ms. Moss, welcome back, longtime no C up here at night.
Hello. And if you do, if you do decide to go for the variance... If you do decide to move the building and go for the variance, at this point, you can just add it to the variance application for the signage, and it's no additional cost or process or anything?
It's on, I think.
It is on, but it's... You speak so softly.
She said the relocation of the wastewater treatment plant, if they wanted to add it to their current variance request, it would not require any additional expense of money.
Or time.
There you go.
There you go. That's cool. So, I'm working out, I still need some details regarding the construction of the signage, and I've been in contact with your office about that a little bit. I see these drawings do not have the red frame background for the signage, so that may have been removed, which would change the square footages and some other calculations, so I'm looking forward to the specifics for all of the symbols and graphics. And then the, the only other thing that I want to be sure of is that the front area that is currently open and park-like and moan would remain in that state, that we would have lawn between Albany Post Road and where the...
The meadow area.
The meadow area is.
From all plantings, yep.
The town has recently adopted a maximum height for maintaining grass of 10 inches. They don't have any language regarding meadows or other maintain-type landscapes, and I just want, I don't want the perception to be that, hey, these people can let it grow taller than somebody else.
It's almost like I was driving past the FDR in the front, where they have the meadow...
It's beautiful, beautiful meadow, isn't it?
That's what you're talking about.
Yeah, but, you know, at a residence, it's not. I'm, I'm hoping that the, that the buffer, what's currently lawn today, as long as that's maintained in a shorter fashion than the landscaping grass, I think that is a distinction between a landscaped area and a lawn, so I would think that would be okay.
We can add a note to the map or something like that as well. Thank you. Ms. Paul Doro?
Mr. Logan's here.
Mr. Logan!
Just a few technical comments. We understand if you're not going to be able to get to them initially. Also, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. First, on Sheet A001, you have the zoning summary table. It doesn't reflect the town's bulk requirements per se. I think it's because you have the requirements for your deed restriction side yard setback, and instead, we just want that to also reflect the town's side yard setbacks. On that note, we would appreciate if you could send in a copy of that deed. All you have is the libra and book on the site right now. Another comment, we were wondering what the existing scale for the site is. We see on that table that it says approximately 100,844 feet. I wasn't sure if that was the existing scale, or if that was perceived as the permitted scale for expanding and non-conforming use. So just some clarification would be great. A number of comments requiring parking, or regarding parking. That same table, again, says that there will be 100, or that there will be one space per 50 square feet of patron use. That is based on a combination of the retail area and the Ngawa. However, the square footage that you get there is approximately 5,000 squeet, yeah, feet. However, if you add up the numbers of the shop and the Ngawa as noted on the newest set, it exceeds that, so we just want some clarification on how exactly you got to your parking standards for the 109 patron spaces. We also just want to note that the town code does require off-street parking to be located in the rear. However, that is already existing, and the proposal is actually removing some parking, so in a way, it's becoming more compliant. Let's see, another requirement in the town code is any off-street parking for 17 or more vehicles shall provide curbed planting islands or beds within the parking area equal in total area to 15% of the total square footage of all stalls and aisles. So we would just need to see those numbers in order to demonstrate that, as well as the total area of impervious parking. Let's see. We also note that for the Town Center Historic District, there are going, there are supposed to be sidewalks along all frontages in Hyde Park, since you're on a corner lot, technically, you would have two frontages, so you would have to request a waiver in order to not have a sidewalk on the non-9G road.
Non-9, St. Andrews.
There we go. We echo Liz's comment about maintaining and repairing stone walls at the site, and we also believe that the Board should discuss the applicant's request for a modification from the architectural standards regarding the roof and facade. And I think that's about it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And Board members, feel free when I call on you to discuss whether you, I mean, I can weigh in right now. I don't think there's a reason to require a sidewalk on that length of St. Andrews. This is primarily because the zone behind it, district, is back to being Balafield Plan Unit Development, and it would be very difficult for us to require a sidewalk up and down that side, because you're going to, you have to be crossing... that side because you're going to, you have to be crossing a stream and DEC would likely require, even though it's Class B where it empties into, it to be some sort of culverted bridge for the sidewalk. But that's up for the discussion of everybody else. I'm not trying to influence.
I'm so glad you're not trying to influence anyone.
I'm sorry. I will also add that these are small, these are good detailed comments, but they can be resolved. I think it's, we've had some issues over the exact square footage is matching up constantly. But one comment, the scale, they're actually reducing it. I believe we discussed that in our first workshop meeting because of the reduction in the impervious pervage from the removal of the asphalt. So they should actually be, I believe in our initial calculations, I have to go back to the older part of the file and look, but I believe you're under the scale that's put right there right now because you're removing so much of the asphalt.
We are. We'll go back.
Thank you. So let me start for tonight, on my inside write. Ms. Dexter, would you like to comment first?
I would also like to echo that I was so sorry to hear about the conditions in Japan in the southwest corner there. This area also has had its share of flooding issues, so, you know, personal experience, it's not fun. And I looked up the site of the Saki Brewery and it appears that there's like a river that runs right next to it, and there's the retail store on one side and the brewery on the other side. How did the store make out? It looks like it might not have been good.
Yeah, I don't have, I don't have all the details, but it's been bad.
Yeah, I can only imagine.
It's the first floor, I think, of the facility.
Yeah, I think it was completely flooded.
Yikes, yeah.
They lost a lot of their inventory, a lot of their-
You could see that there's not enough distance there for them to, that they were right in the middle of it.
This is their, like Katrina, you know.
Yeah, well, exactly.
That type of scope.
Exactly, or our Irene that we had up here.
Right, right.
Yep. So anyway, I just, I understand. So my, the other thing I wanted to say is, you have done an immense amount of work, and I really do congratulate you on that. And I see you have a new, a new 3D model over there. I don't think you brought that last time. There was, right, the one right, right here?
Just work, it's the same.
Is that the same one?
Yeah, but it didn't have the rice polishing on the line.
Ah, okay. Yeah, it was, yeah, it was kind of missing, so it looks like you've done some more work. I appreciate that. I appreciate all the drawings here because it does help me to get more perspective. And I have a couple of basic questions from the site plan perspective. Are you, can you refresh my memory? Are you removing any trees? I was trying to read the plan.
The what? Oh, I'm sorry. Whoops.
That's going to be on the record.
Yes, you're going to have to turn the button on. Yep.
All right. Yes, we are removing some trees from property.
From the front?
Most of it, we're not removing any trees from the buffer setback. Where we're removing trees is mostly within the parking stalls. There's a lot of pear trees there that are towards the end of their natural life.
Actually, it's a lawn culture of calorie pears.
Yes, a lot of calorie-
Not healthy.
Right.
And when we were on-site and doing our analysis, there was a lot of damage from this winter where the branches were falling off and the trunk themselves were no longer viable for a lot of them.
Okay, that makes sense.
So they've been there, we think, for about 30 years. They've probably reached their natural life. And then beyond that, there's maybe a few trees, pines, and other spruces around the area for the retention basin that we're going to remove to make room for the thicket planting, but it's not a large impact to the canopy.
Okay. And the reason why I ask is because this rendering here and the rendering of the rice polishing building, literally the way it is right now, you wouldn't see really any of those. Because when you drive by, I'm trying to look and see, and I'm like, I can't see really anything with the existing trees that are there. So I was just, I kind of see a clear view of that rice building. I'm thinking, maybe that's just the rendering to help us get a, the view?
Yeah, I believe the architects chose the, the one view that there, where there's a, you can actually see it down in the bottom right-hand corner of the site plan where the, where the existing trees are a little bit thinner.
Okay.
But when you're driving, it's a, it's a small window.
It's a second, it's a second. And in the winter, we will be able to see it, so, because there's not a whole lot of evergreens in there. Okay. The other site plan element was snow storage? I'm not su, is, is that noted?
I don't believe so.
I don't believe that's noted.
It is.
Is it? I didn't, I didn't see it.
I mean, if, if it is, it just didn't catch my eye.
They can put it on there, Ian. I mean, there is, there is, you know, a lot of area there on the St. Andrews side-
Yes.
-by where the stormwater basin is.
True, but they're also proposing parking there for the tour buses.
No, I meant, I meant, I mean, they still have a grassed area off, you know, the pavement area-
Okay.
-down there. But again, it should, you know, be labeled.
It should be labeled, yes.
I believe it was added to the plans. There was snow storage area identified here and also along this area, snow storage would it, would be done prior to bus parking, typically at night or-
Right, right.
And also, snow storage could occur in this area, but we prefer that it not.
Right. I, I understand that.
Could you state your name for the record?
I'm sorry, Linda Stancliff with the Chazen Companies.
Thank you.
Okay.
Nice to meet you. We haven't worked with you before.
Yeah, thank you.
Just quickly, we had a comment way at the end of our memo that basically indicated that we didn't do the review per the list of site plan elements. Because the plans were so detailed and we were looking more for clarification, so we kind of referred the applicant to look at those and, you know, so there will be more information coming onto the plan. I think snow storage is in there.
Okay, okay. It's just that's, that's usually something that we do ask to see. Now, I wanted to just get to your request for waivers for the architectural elements, and I've been looking and looking and rereading and rereading, and so these are my personal views. And I'll start by saying, there's not a whole lot you can do with the roof. But I think that's pretty clear, and I think you've, you've done a good job. I mean, it's still going to be flat, but that's what you were given. And so I personally think I'm okay with that. The one area, though, that I, I'm like, we're still in the paper stage here, so humor me. We do ask that for larger buildings, it's called large building design, where the building has a facade longer than 100 feet, that we're looking for a grouping of two or more small, well-proportioned buildings, but that can be done in a variety of ways. You don't necessarily have to stick something on the building. There's things like verandas, porticoes, courtyards, similar elements, and you have those in your site plan, right? You have a stage, but it's kind of sitting separate from the building. Perhaps that could be incorporated somehow off to the side, because I, you know, when you look at the site plan, you have that employee parking, which is kind of right in front. Maybe you could move the stage so that it blocks, it blocks the parking and creates maybe, it, it would make it look like that building was sawed in half, like as you were looking into the site. I'm just trying to think of ways that perhaps you could meet this requirement, because we are in paper stage. So get out, you know, start moving things around, seeing if you can create like a little private space or something, maybe along the side. A veranda is one of the ideas, is that perhaps you've got the angawa, perhaps underneath that, somewhere in the middle, there's a little, like a bump out or something, that's just a, a private space for, on a nice summer day, that people can sit there. So something to break up that long, it's like 230 feet, which I wouldn't, I don't think I'd want to stick anything on the building, but you can maybe use elements that are grouped so that they might break it up without actually having to change the architecture. I'm not an architect, I'm not anything like that. I'm just, I'm looking at your site plan saying, it is, it's beautiful, but maybe you could rearrange that to maybe give a little bit more, to break up that long facade. And I, I note that the rice polishing building has been brought down to 100 feet, right? It was 111, I think, so you're, you're good there. So that's my big thing, is I, these are all beautiful, but if, if we could nudge it just a little bit more and take maybe some of those elements that are already there and just rearrange them, rework them, because I notice, again, that employee parking is just kind of sticking out there so that as you're looking, maybe you could combine a couple of things. You could hide that, screen it by either the stage or, what else do you have? You had, you do have a lot of landscaping. I'm just looking to try to see, I don't want to just give a waiver without asking you to try something. We may not like it. You know, it, I'm not saying that this isn't the final plan, but if I don't ever see anything different, it's like, well, we didn't even try.
I guess, without, without too much engaging, because, I mean, we, we-
Understood.
We got this letter from, but we haven't had an opportunity to really-
Understood.
-sit down and work through with them, but I, I know in some of the initial, I mean, as we stated in the letter, the angawa that wraps around is about 30% of that wall is a whole different treatment in the, in the sense of breaking it up. Also-
On the south side.
On the south side, yeah. On the west side, it's, yeah, on the west side, it's significantly more. I'm, I'm assuming you're talking about-
You're referring to these areas where the angawa will poke out to try to break up the mass right in through here, along the western-facing and the south-facing walls?
Right. The, the south wall, I'm talk, I'm talking about where it wraps around as, toward St. Andrews.
Right here.
Right.
That would be the angawa.
So, so, you know, a, a, a lot of that wall is already, respectfully, I think, is treated and differentiated between the, the concern of having a one continuous wall with, I think, a pretty, you know, substantial or differentiated treatment. The other thing is, is I think you mentioned, there is significant landscaping along there that really breaks it up and to the, to the view. I mean, you, it won't appear as, you know, a, a long, I know the concern is these 100, 200-foot spare, monotonous walls, especially in the downtown area where it's talked about the building. So landscaping will have a significant effect on that. But we will, we will take these concerns back and continue having that discussion with the client to the extent we can.
I appreciate that. And I would just say that, you know, in requesting the waiver, if, if you can say, we've, we've tried this, we've tried that, we've, you know, it, again, it shows that we've exhausted everything, and I just really want the best project possible. And I do appreciate all the work that you've done, so I'll just leave it at that.
I just want to say, I think that was really, I, I hadn't considered what you just said about maybe relocating the stage so that it connects to the building, but you're right. It doesn't have to be, it can be done by courtyards, verandas, anything that, that is sort of pertinent to, but not necessarily part of the building to break that up as well. And maybe that's a better location, have it closer to the building. I don't know the stage, I don't know what all they intend to do with it, but there's actually not a lot of landscaping around the stage, and getting it closer in would be, maybe have more shade or something. But they're going to take a look at that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Oliver?
Again, my, my thoughts and prayers go out to those affected by the flooding in Japan. And I understand that, you know, due to that, you guys haven't had the time to gain the responses that we may be looking for. But I, I also agree with my colleague here that, you know, on previous applications with other applicants, we've spent months looking at different architecture that will fit into our town code. And, you know, I, I actually like the way, you know, you've designed the building and the landscaping and everything, but I, I really think that to do this project justice and our town, you know, town code justice, that we really should see some other possibilities and, you know, we'll, we will know, you know, okay, maybe this is better, we, we like this, and then we have, you know, reasons why we can support it. But thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Chris. Ms. Napoli?
You are so brief. I'll try. Usually don't succeed, though. A question about, about the, the owners in Japan, did they lose any workers or in, in the flood? So there's no, at least for them, there was no loss of human life. Well, that's, that's good. Please send us our, send them our thoughts. I concur with Mr. Oliver and Ms. Dexter. As beautiful as these, this building is, it is not in compliance with the town code. And I now have a better understanding, or I'm assuming I have a better understand, understanding with the response of your letter, if you were not able to really work with them because of the flood. I didn't walk away from reading your response as, as a very clear, specific reasons why you could not attempt to do anything. So, understanding that now, it, it does make sense to me. I like the idea of, of a, of the veranda, of moving maybe the stage a little bit closer. And Ms. Dex is absolutely right. After we see a different rendition, we, we may come back to this, but it truly is not fair to all the other residents in this town who have had to abide by the town code. And I don't think we would be doing our job if we did not make an honest attempt at doing that. I do like the rice building. I, I'm very partial to that look. And I, too, like Ms. Dex, has spent some time looking at different architecture and for the Japanese modern style, and this really just captures it beautifully.
Thank you. Mr. Pickett?
Yes, ma'am.
So then I have faith in him to be able to do, if you could do that.
Yeah.
What we're asking is a very small-
He took Copia's notes, I watched. Mr. Pickett?
Yes, we wish our best to everybody in the Yamaguchi Prefecture when you was first following all that, why, and hearing about the loss and the shutdown, why it's, you first took a deep breath and wondered about this, and then dealt a lot and spent a lot of time in Japan. You know, the people over there have a 10-year view, not a three-month view, so I figured now it's going. I, I love the design of the front of this. I think it's very elegant and follow-through, it's built like it looks, it looks very well-crafted. I think the windows and the interior design with angawa gives it that extra depth for the front. You know, there's a long linear issue or problem that people are talking about, and I think that when being there and looking at it, it's going to break that reality up. I think that, that looks good. The only, on the rice polishing building, this is personal, you know, if there was some type of little oriental, oriental design that could be put in there, so it would kind of tie back into what's going on here. You would want it, keep it simple, but to me, when looking at it, again, that's the first thing that you're going to see when coming up Route 9, and first thing that's close to the road, if there's some type of simple oriental design to be incorporated, particularly in the, in the brown part of it. Otherwise, I really like what you've done. I, I noticed up in this area right here, you had the grass pavers that are already incorporated, and I love that. It's used a ton over there. I wish we'd do it more over here. That's it, I really-
Mr. Dupree?
Look forward to-
Before you go on.
To working on it more, like I say, I, I'm not in favor of chopping that up or breaking that up, but, you know, it kind of, you've seen the movie Blazing Saddles and Rock Ridge, you know, and you don't want to chop it up like that, so.
Thank you, Ms. Napoli. Raise your hand for a follow-up?
Yes, I, I'm sorry, but I forgot to ask, the last time we had asked for a cross-section of the roof to see? I don't know if you read-
There was a cross-section that we issued the last time. I was going to guess one. This is the second one.
Someone else mentioned that, I'm not sure, I'm not sure what that request was, or did we miss something?
Because we, we were talking about the slope, and I remember saying that I was going to reserve, you had- going to reserve, you had talked about supplying a, a cross-section.
We handed one out last time.
Well, there was something about, when we were talking at the agenda meeting about, there was, there was, I believe it was in a, a letter, where there was something about like mitigation for the flat roof is like a, there was the, again, I apologize, I don't know architectural, but they, but the top piece there on the roof, it had said that there was a one-on-twelve pitch.
I think there was a slope.
But I don't think that showed on the cross-section, if I'm not mistaken.
That's what we're looking for, is to see that pitch.
It was, it was a thirty mile slope. This is-
Microphone, microphone, microphone? This was the one we handed out earlier. This is the one-on-twelve slope back toward the, toward the roof.
Maybe that's-
Okay, we can revise it with-
He talked about the same one.
Microphones, we can't hear.
Sorry. Well, we misunderstood, we misunderstood, well, I thought that the one-on-twelve, where we're supposed to be like a vertical pitch. But you're saying it's just on the top, a one-on-twelve. Maybe you could show some of the planning board members their-
This one?
They're more interested.
One-on-twelve. That's a one-on-twelve back pitch. This slopes, one-on-twelve, from this point down the left end of the roof.
Thank you. Sure. Thank you very much.
I can hear you.
It's on. It's on.
Yes. So this, this slopes from the, from the lead edge back toward the roof, one-on-twelve. It's this area you're talking about, right? You're very tough with the raptor? Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Yes.
All right.
So that, that, so the angawa provides a depth out, but then the, I don't know what to call it, but the raptor edge, because they look like the raptor tails?
Decorative parapet.
Decorative parapet. It's slipping up more. So that's, and that's also, they use the same cross-section to show that it would hide if you're looking at it from Route 9, it would hide all the mechanicals.
And does it hide it from the St. Andrews?
Yes, because from St. Andrews, it's even further to the roof.
Further, okay.
Yeah.
That was just a really clarification. And-
Because, you know, right here, it's actually, the mechanical equipment is, is only a certain distance from the leading edge. But on this side, it's actually almost double.
Oh, wow, okay.
So it would, you wouldn't see it until you're in the woods. You know, I think what's happening here is that we're also familiar with the building, that when we, and when we see this, the way it's shot up- Yes. We can't see that it's actually tilting up higher because everything appears to be coming up and at you. That's just the nature of the architectural rendering. But that's why last time, you've, you've raised the pitch of the parapet, which is under our code for how to disguise flat roofs, because the roof already exists. Yes. Right. Thank you. Thank you.
And there was, Ms., I need to give credit to Ms. Dexter, who was suggesting, at some point, it might be useful to do a site visit.
Oh, right, right.
To, you know, we're, it's an area we know extremely well. But on the other hand, I mean, I don't know, we need it to be formal with your all coming, but-
I will contact the representatives and schedule a site visit, see if they want to come and to make sure we have permission to walk the site.
Thank you. That, that's, that is good.
I did remember that.
Anything else? Mr. Pickett, you're done, too?
Yes.
Mr. Murphy?
Um, I want, I would, you know, I'm sorry about the flood. I wish you could convey our appreciation to them for investing in Hyde Park. I haven't given this as much attention as it deserves, so my question may be out of line. But the major site plan flaw previously to this was that when buses discharged people at this location, it became a game of chicken between pedestrians and the buses. I'm not sure whether you delineate where they're going to discharge the people, but I would like to encourage you to have a spot where the major pedestrian crossways aren't going back to the parking lot and they're not playing chicken with the buses. And at, at the same time, the people coming off the bus don't have to walk across a lot of parking area. So I just thought that would be something that you might want to think about. And, and again, thanks for investing in Hyde Park.
Thank you, Chan. Ms. Weiser?
I also echo my colleagues' sympathies for your client regarding the flooding. In their arguments for a standards waiver, I think what's important to note here is that the applicant is also asking us to consider the intent of the code, so that they can maintain the building's architectural integrity and defend the structure's appropriateness for the town of Hyde Park as presented. My understanding of the goal behind rules regarding roof shapes and fenestration is to preemptively deter an applicant from proposing a hulking, impersonal box with no architectural merit. This fifty-eight thousand-plus square foot building achieved a spectacular feat. It shows us something that this large can successfully delay, display elegance and airiness, and in their own words, simplicity and directness. This building delights. You would never use those words to describe a big box store. I would also argue that the expansive glazing, which exposes a visual type of fenestration rather than the physical, the angawa and the decorative parapet will serve well in breaking up the lines horizontally rather than vertically. And I think the roof is great. Thank you.
Okay, let me conclude. I'm just going to rattle off some of my comments. I can get them into the record. If you'd like me to mail them out to you, I will. First, of course, we'll need to respond to the Morse Associates comment later, comment letter dated July seventeenth. Liz brought this up on sheet eight-three-oh-one. The color, the colors of material should be shown and reviewed by the planning board. For example, the angawa under the material notes in the table only states projecting angawa canopy, not what it's composed of or color. I took, referred to the two different heights shown on A dash two-zero-one at twenty-one point two inches and A three-two-one, that it's fifteen feet tall, the enclosure. Just trying to make sure. Note fifteen on that same page should be changed to specify, let me see if I can say it correctly, yakisuga ita, rather than simply decorative wood cladding. The reason why I say this is Tad, when she goes, she'll be checking out every element of site plan as described, and she'll want to make sure it all ties in for the CO. We've been working together a long time, and she's, as I like to say, a strict constructions. And the lighting, the notes say parking lot slash roadway light by others. So I assume this means that you're keeping the additional lighting in the parking areas. That's what I guess. At the same time, I want to thank you for the additional sheet, E dash oh-five-two-A. And again, don't take notes, I'll send this to you. In that, it says that the maximum foot candle in the parking lot, too, is nineteen. But I, I'm going blinding with these. I looked really closely. I couldn't find anywhere that a max was nineteen foot candles, and that would be really harsh and terrible. So I think that table needs to be revised, because the highest one I could find was five point seven directly under a light, and it faded pretty quickly. You're all nodding, so, okay. That should somehow be changed. Sheet L dash zero-zero-one-A, that was in the last application, the circulation diagram, yellow dotted lines, I think, are for truck deliveries and pickups for picking up to, to export the socky out. The blue would be visitors and employees, and red appears to be deliveries to the rice polishing building. I can see all of them and how they operate, but I can't see how the tour bus would navigate the site. The audience won't be able to see it, but there's, as you travel down right here, if the bus came in this way and then went this way, your, your entrance, your public entrance is right there. But there's a really tight, it appears to me to be a tight turning radius right in through here, where existing water tank underneath is proposed to be seen. We should see actual turning radius shown in through here for the bus, also for any fire trucks, because you are changing this a little bit by giving this outdoor space, which we all love. So I want to make sure that the fire department is okay with it as well. Sheet L dash zero-one-one, reinforced grass paving. I just wondered why that's there. I think it's a great idea. It's shown just to the east of the rice polishing building, I believe. Again, we encourage this. And also, can you show in the same materials in illustration, even if it's just a picture or tear sheet of, quote, "random polygonal flagstone paving granite with thermal finish"? I'm not sure what that meant with flagstone and granite in the same note on the map. Sheet L dash zero-two-one, I already asked this outdoors, but the rough lawn planted areas, which is in through here, and in through here, and in through here, those are also proposed to be heavily planted with the thicket trees of gray birches. I'd asked about how often we mow, because of the new law that was passed, where the grasses can't be more than ten inches. I don't think that should apply to landscape beds, but I just want to make sure, because that's up to Tad, as his own administrator, to make that determination. And then if people disagree, they have to go to the ZBA for it. Again, this law was not passed to us, by the way, because it's not zoning. That's all we get to comment on. On sheet eight-zero-six-zero, signage, Tad already pointed out, we need more details. And also, some are shown in millimeters or meters. Others are shown in feet and inches. They should be shown in feetages to comport with our code. But also, there's a note that says, quote, "logo is provisional, a Chinese character representing the product name is assumed." If you want these approved as part of site plan, we have to see what the, what the exact signs are going to be. Otherwise, we can note location and get you through, and then you can come back for a sign permit. I also, interestingly, thought, why do they have Chinese character there? Because the Japanese did not have anything but, they had no written language when they adopted more or less Chinese characters, which I didn't know until I researched this, because I thought, they're way too smart to have made that mistake. And you were. It's called kanji. There are other now different idiograms or logographics that the Japanese use for teaching young people, but it's actually all Chinese. So, that's why I say you still learn something up on this day, every day, no matter how long you've done this. Last, I, I think I heard it, but I want to make sure, you're not removing any trees along the sidewalk. You're just going to let the, the meander through. So it stays through shaded areas, which will greatly enhance people pedestrian using it. Otherwise, I think you heard a consensus about maybe making an effort to figure out a way to not just rely on the angawa and the glazing and the vertical elements of the charred wood to create a breakup, maybe not creating two or small buildings. But as Ms. Dexter, I mean, I heard four people saying, sure, let's try this, or at least three. But to think about maybe adding, relocating the stage or adding something to break that up. I don't think, as Ann said, since it's in paper, that's an unreasonable request. Otherwise, I heard a lot of compliments on the site. I heard lots of compliments for the architecture. And that's rare that you hear these kinds of compliments at this pass. I'm serious, from this board. It's one of the most important things we think we evaluate, because this is going to live on, even if this business closes. We're going to be, we're going to be left with this for a while, maybe after we're all shuffled off this mortal coil. And to see something that's, as Ann said, this elegant, I think you've just done a tremendous job. Last, I, when I heard comments about maybe making this more traditional and Asian style, I have a pretty good memory. And I, I want to say that in every presentation at the beginning, this actually is a traditional style for agricultural use in Japan.
Yes.
It's called-
Akura.
Akura, thank you. I thought so. So I only heard Mr. Pickett talk about embellishing it. I personally think it's fine. But I will tell you that county planning called me to ask for some clarification. And oddly, that's the only building they didn't like.
Well, maybe if they get to see this rendition, it's blown up.
Yeah, I said, what do you think of the main building? Oh, it's gorgeous, it's elegant, it's beautiful. We, we, no comments on that, except positive. Really don't like that. Okay.
The reason-
Yeah, go ahead.
I said what it is. And incorporating something in design is not particular for me or whatever, but people that are coming up or coming down and seeing that, to me, a lot of people here just think that that's a weird-looking barn. But if it had some type of oriental architecture on it, it would be-
I think the charred wood, that the tech, the, the charred wood is going to make it look a lot richer. I think that that-
Yeah, I'm not worried about that. What I'm doing is what, the first eyesight of it, that it be something-
Tied to the site.
Tied to the site, yeah.
That's best.
And I agree.
To me, it is. But I'll also add that I hope that we can educate people instead of thinking that it needs to have some sort of Asian embellishment, that it's the actual true Asian style. There's no way for me to stand out on the highway and hawk that at people, but believe me, that's what I'd like to do. It reminds me of a certain church that's on nine G that people, after it was erected, told me that they couldn't believe we let a Muslim church up, or house of faith. And number one, what difference does that make? But number two, that was the traditional style of what churches looked like back in Bethlehem and Nazareth.
Yeah, yeah.
So at any rate, you can take all this, absorb it. I will send you my comments. Let me, since this is a public-
You're a great planning board, I just wanted to say.
Michael.
I love it.
But since this is a public hearing, would anyone from the public like to speak about this application? I thought not. Yes, someone, Ms. Ackelson?
Because of the back and forth and some possible architectural, I guess, alternatives or elements that might be added to save, you know, going through the trouble of a whole new architectural plan. If it's possible for there to be presented a couple of conceptual architectural alternatives for the planning board to discuss before you go through the trouble of redesigning the facade.
Yeah, I think in the past, they've said, you know, onion skin is fine.
Right. We should, I should have added that. I'm sorry. I'm so used to working with the same people that I know in the audience over and over again. For issues like this, you could just do a top-down shot first on something like this without having to submit a bunch of plans. You could just show it at the next meeting or anytime you want to come. An offline meeting, say, or you could just sort of hatch in something along the front elevation. Don't make it too elaborate unless you suddenly get going and think it looks gorgeous and that your client's going to, you know, turn somersaults and forget all about the problems they have back in Japan. This shouldn't be anything that, in other words, requires a full set of new plans in any possible way. It's more or less playing around. And when we say onion skin, we often take onion skin, put it over and trace it to see what we think. Any other comment, any other questions or comments?
My only other comment would be, while you're doing different renditions, you might want to consider doing a few on the sewage treatment system. Because we're talking about straight walls up that are metal, no-
No, 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 not metal. It's charred wood.
Oh, no, the sewage treatment?
It's charred wood.
Oh, I thought we-
Oh, oh.
It's, it was a little confusing.
My apologies.
It's a little confusing. There are gates that show metal that don't, you won't face, but the note toward it looked like that's what it was. I didn't ever see-
I take that back then.
Yeah.
This is what I looked at.
The sewage-
Oh, to the right.
This is the, right here, that's the sewage treatment. That's the waste by finger pipe.
That's why I said this early. That's charred wood on the outside, or the, I'm not going to try to say that again.
And how come there's no roof?
At the moment, it doesn't, didn't require one. I don't know that's sewage.
Okay.
Microphone.
Can I just repeat why there's no roof?
At the moment, it didn't require one.
Okay.
So, we'd talked out in the hallway. Mr. Zaren stopped and spoke to Ms. Paladour and I about not being able to contact his client. As I said, that's logical. I imagine even with cell phones, communication's tough over there right now, because there's a lot going on. We'd suggested maybe adjourning this to August fifteenth. That sounds reasonable. And we'll note that if they can't get in touch with their clients, they can't provide answers, can't really do anything, we can, we don't have to have them come back up and charge the applicant. We can just open and adjourn, and Mr. Zaren can make whatever request he wants to for the date of adjournment.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
So they're going to motion to adjourn this to August fifteenth?
So move.
Second.
On favor?
Hi.
Thank you. And I want to, I should have said this earlier. My points seem picky yun, but probably a lot of ours do. But I want to make sure we have a really clean set of plans. And these can be handled pretty easily, because I feel like we're already ninety-five percent of the way there, myself.
Yeah, I, I think we are, too. I think the, the only issue that, and I'm sure you can, you've, you've all highlighted it, is going to be how we treat the balance of the wall. I mean, we, we have had conversations with them previously before the, and we tried to lay it out. You know, the, the Japanese culture is clean lines. I mean, it's, that's part of their architecture, not monolithic walls, you know, monotone, monolithic walls, which I know is your, your, your code's concern. So we will, we will certainly go back and see if there are things we can do to tweak. I think just as far as expectations go, I don't think they're going to be willing to take a full re, re-architecture or re-engineering-
No, I don't, I don't think we want that.
Of the wall. I just wanted to make that clear about, you know, design, so forth.
I don't think, I don't think we're asking that.
No, I, I-
Okay.
Yeah, I'm not looking for you to re-architect a building. I'm just saying, some of the elements can be-
We will-
That's why, actually, I was looking at the landscape architect when Ann was making these sort of discussion and suggestions, because some of them really seem to incorporate maybe outdoor spaces as part of an indoor space. If you, you know what I'm talking about. You know, to break it up, not by something structural necessarily, a stage is something structural, but something that might shoot out, that might provide landscaped green walls with a space to sit outside.
Okay.
In other words, if the two of you could collaborate on this, then that way, we wouldn't need to go through the re-engineering of the front wall. We'd still achieve this, just in a slightly different manner.
Great. Okay.
I hope you still have the planning board after all that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Have a safe drive back. See you, see you in a month. The next item on the agenda is Jeffrey Groves Estates re-subdivision. This has been discussed extensively. Mr. Watts is here to continue on. The applicants are seeking approval to re-subdivide. And also, as they re-subdivide, there were thirty-eight townhomes along a north-south spine to the west of the site. And then there were nine single-family homes with some open space to the right or the east side of the site. They're proposing to dissolve the nine single-family home lots and then add twelve townhomes. They're proposing to dissolve the nine single-family home lots and then add 12 townhomes. I think I can be brief and just say that the board has been spoken highly in favor of the change every time, because the more compact design, it leaves more natural open space, undisturbed. We've had a couple of public comments, but primarily, the major one was a resident, a neighbor across the street, across North Cross, who requested maybe some more landscaping before the sewage treatment plant building. I've gone out there and looked where I think it's going to be, and I think there's still going to be plenty of natural vegetation myself. Plus, I think that the building is really nice-looking, better than anything, I've said it in my, I read the notes, I've said it, it's better than anything we've seen so far for a sewage wastewater treatment plant in terms of the exterior.
I tend to agree.
Yeah. So, it's, you're sort of blocking something that's pretty, if that makes sense, but...
Yeah, it's, it's not intended to be any kind of eyesore, it's intended to enhance all the rest of development, and you put that much money into a building, you want it to look nice.
It's also, I kind of, well, we'll, I'll defer to the rest of the board, but I, when I went by the other day and saw the distance, I mean, it's, it's seven, 70, I think...
Yeah, it's...
Five feet set back. It's pretty far away from, from the road.
I think it's 60.
I believe it was 60.
60, that's, that's...
Approximately.
I walked with my feet, and it seems far enough away, there's going to be vegetation. But first, Megan, a motion to reopen the public hearings.
Moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, Mr. Watts, questions, comments? What would you like to...
Well, Lou Kaufman isn't here, he would have, he's still recovering.
Was this an emergency?
He's still recovering.
Is this an emergency?
He had surgery.
Oh.
He had surgery.
Yeah, the rest of the board doesn't know, he had a heart bypass. Was this an emergency bypass procedure?
No, I believe this was, this was planned.
Okay.
Wow.
But his recovery is taking a little bit longer, so he hasn't had a chance to address pretty much any of the legal issues that we've discussed, which is, obviously, we're waiting on that. We are trying to coordinate with the surveyor to put forth the rest of the plat items, which were required, meets and bounds particularly, and to...
And that's to go to from preliminary to final approval?
Yes.
Resubdivision?
Along with many of the legal instruments required, legal descriptions for easements and such, so we, we're really waiting on trying to coordinate with some, some other people here. Well, we, we did get ahold of the architect, and we did change the rendering to gray. That was one of the requests to the board, to see different color. They're okay with gray, so...
Wow.
There we have it. This was not submitted yet, I printed this...
Don't bother, wait till you have a full submission plan. But I want to thank you on behalf of the board for the change. I was one of the ones who didn't mind the creamy color, but I think this looks very tailored and nice.
Yeah.
Well, I have the creamy if you want to compare directly.
Good job from the two outer ends, so to speak, for kind of holding firm on that.
And they did...
They have the floor plans also were sent to us, and the elevations, they have added the garage lights in the back, the light in the rear above all the porches, and he has told me that the front door light, he was anticipating putting a, it's going to be up in the overhead, so you're not even going to see it.
Oh, nice.
A recessed light?
A recessed light. I can see if I can get a cut sheet on that and adjust the plan sheet accordingly so that they match. This was something I just found out today. And again, typical floor plan, these being the first floor, second floor, typical end unit. Obviously, the other side would just be a mirror. And then the intermediate units, first floor, second floor, they will be submitted as, as well in the next submission, but we have made a little progress, at least on that front.
These look nice to me.
Yeah.
Comments from consultants, anything? Liz, Pete?
No, I know we're behind on reviewing the amended, amended SWIP. As I said before, it seems to be like a run on them, you know, lately, not only here but in many other, you know, towns, so, you know, we'll get to it. I sent an email, you know, to one of our guys to see if we could get to it either the end of this week or early next week. Again, this is just an amendment of what you had, you know, before, so I don't really anticipate there to be any, you know, major items, so, but, you know, we'll get to it. But, I mean, once you're able to get stuff like together, we should have something out to you by next week, so I don't think it'll hold up anything, because you have some other items to take care of before you resubmit. So, how are you making out with some of the other agencies? Did you, have you submitted to the Health Department or...
We are waiting on...
Water wastewater?
The wastewater, we are not directly dealing with the wastewater...
Oh, that's right, yeah, but it's another firm, right?
It's in the works, yes. As far as I know, Lou is following up with that, with them, to see where they are.
But they've been, they, all the plans have been actually submitted to Health...
They've been, they've gone back and forth a few times...
Okay.
To the Board of Health. If, if you would like, I can see if I can get ahold of it.
No, 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 that's fine, I'm just asking. And then there was also, have you guys submitted to the County Public Works Department for the access?
We have not submitted that yet.
Okay.
Steven Gill, we're working with him on a couple other projects as well, and he's also a little, a little behind.
Yeah, I was bugging him today about one of my projects, so, yeah.
We're going to try and reach out to him. I'm not anticipating any...
Yeah, shouldn't be.
Comments, because this was already conceptually approved, and we haven't changed anything.
Okay.
Thank you. Ms. Moss, comments? Ms. Paladaro, comments?
No new comments.
Well, so I, just for the board's verification, in doing this, similar to the enclave, we had a sort of process to follow, which we needed to approve first. So, I'm assuming that we would need to get, do the final subdivision approval and then consider site plan, because the site plan is tied to a site that shows...
One of, one of the conditions of site plan approval would be filing of the plat.
So, if, in other words, if we could get the information for the subdivision, we could consider taking action on that first before the site plan, although I feel like we're really close on the site plan, too. Victoria gave you guys a resolution with draft conditions?
Just the draft legal conditions.
Legal conditions, way back when. I think Mr. Kaufman wants to handle that afterwards, after approvals. I just want to point out, we'd like, the board and our consultants in particular prefer for us to have as few conditions as possible, because it links and lengthens the time from when we do the approval to when you have to meet the conditions, which is six months, so we give you two 180 extensions, and then that's it, there's no more.
Agreed.
So, just make sure he's aware of that, because some of the legal stuff looked complicated to me. I'm not an attorney, he is. I know.
I'll do my best, Lou.
Okay. Wait, you have to play with your mustache a little bit. That's really, that's really it. I just want to make sure that we don't pile on so many conditions that it becomes difficult and the approval lapses. Other than that, I...
I'm, I'm not sure what the timeframe is on the surveyor to get to meets and bounds. Obviously, it would be required for many of those legal items and, and the plat.
Well, it also needs to be shown on the plat.
Yes, and, and so that's...
That's really the problem.
It's, yes, we're still trying to reach out to the surveyor. I believe he's also had some, I'm hearing he might have some issues, personal issues as well, and he's been unresponsive for the last couple of weeks, so we're trying to see if we can come up with another alternative.
I can't make a recommendation for surveyors or any professionals, but I did just meet a young man a couple of weeks ago at an event who works for a surveyor, and he said they're still taking jobs. I know surveyors are busy right now, in particular, this time of the year, so, anything else, Victoria?
I was just going to say that I know Mr. Kaufman requested that the public hearing be closed, but we're still waiting on additional information, and so it's too early to do that.
We can't close the public hearing until we, the public is, is allowed to comment on anything that we see, unless it's, it's been discussed and it's fairly minor, not a big change. In these cases, they shouldn't be major, but it's also, once we close the public hearing, we have, it starts a timeline for us. We have 60 days to approve or disapprove, and if we don't have all the information, then we can't approve. And that starts the process all over again, so we're trying to actually protect his interests, is what I may make sure you know.
Right. The, it's been some unfortunate timing between the other applicants, our office and everything. I think we were, we were anticipating to be a little further than we are right now at this meeting, so we're still moving along, we're trying to, my, my first priority right now is trying to get the surveyor, because it's road-blocking everything else...
It is.
Right now.
Okay. And if you need, just email me, and I can, I have his card at my house, and I can send it to you. That doesn't mean he can do it immediately, but at least he would say, oh, no, we're still taking lots of jobs.
We're trying to get ahold of the...
Original...
Original surveyor, because he's already, he's already tied in and has all the information, he has all, he did all the previous subdivision work. Hope, we're hoping it would be easier for him...
It's going to be hard for somebody else to come in and...
They have to re, almost scratch on the...
They got to redo it all.
Yeah, because they don't, they don't have plans, they don't...
They don't have anything, so we're, there's pros, there's cons.
He'll get back to you, I'm sure.
We're trying.
Any new comments from the board?
No, but it does look really nice. I must admit that the gray looks nice.
Ms. Weiser, could you see the gray?
I did see the gray, very indeed.
You did see it, okay.
We were thinking to adjourn this to September 5th, but would you like us to do it to August 15th? I mean, that gives you extra time and Mr. Kaufman extra time for the surveyor and legal stuff.
I could try August 15th, but without knowing what the surveyor, when I get anything back, it's tight.
Let's stick it to September 5th.
Let's do September 5th, then.
Yeah. So, Megan, a motion to adjourn this public hearing to September 5th?
Moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Brian, good to see you.
Thank you much.
The next public hearing is continued one for Salt Point Solar. The applicants are seeking approval to erect a solar array farm, requires site plan approval plus special use permit. The location technically is 525 Salt Point Turnpike, but there will likely be a new location. We had a new submission from the last meeting. I hope, I think everyone's had a chance to review it, I know, as did I. Ms. Axelston issued a review comment based on that, that's fairly minor. We went, there was lots of back and forth in the agenda meeting about whether we were prepared to do seeker determination, and I believe the conclusion was yes, primarily because we had all the information. I congratulate you, by the way, for using Saratoga Associates for your view shed analysis. They're the ones who wrote the book on view shed analysis for the DEC. Pretty slick.
Thank you.
I make a motion, we open the public hearing?
So moved, I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So, anything you want to add tonight, Mr. Stumpf?
No, just, just Brian Stumpf, zoning manager for Cypress Creek Renewables. With me tonight are two Cypress Creek representatives who are available upon request for cameo appearances. And I'll, I also invited my friends, the friends of Peach Hill Park, and I don't believe, they regret being able to join us tonight, but they send their regards. But, yeah, this, there has been a submission, submitted back in July 2nd, and I believe at this point, it's been a fun-filled journey, and I think we're polishing the remaining items, and we're in...
Do you have a set of plans you could put up over there?
I have a landscape...
That'll probably do it. Just, so I can show you the, I was emailing Mr. McIlwain today, so, kind of tough to see there, but they're proposing, obviously, screening here and screening here. This is along Dorsey, where the new entrance will be, and this is along the, so the ish, the Peach Hill Park view shed is from around here.
Right.
Now, right now, they're showing on another plan set that they're going to be removing trees on through here and on through here. This area, which is cross-hatched in the plans to show tree removal, actually has maybe five left. I mean, again, this was, Mr. Baxter had cleared this property with the idea of going to raise hops for the brewery business, and in, in the interim, he was approached by Cypress Creek and made an offer, which I guess was more profitable, so. But in reducing the more trees here, my concern from Peach Hill was not, Saratoga Associates took the pictures from leaf on, but I was up there first when there were no leaves, and it's all deciduous up there. I mean, there's some junk trees, there's a lot of alanthus up there that they probably need to remove, that factor into those pictures you saw. During leaf off-season, you would now, because of these trees being removed in through here, you would see this whole area, not so much this, because it goes down again, but this apex of the site and a little bit of this. So, what my suggestion was, is that whatever the natural, the existing vegetation is in here, which I've gone by, and it's just maples, et cetera, that some of the trees be selectively removed from this area, because this is their stormwater detention basin, I believe. So, we cannot have trees put in here, because then they'd have to re-engineer the SWIP, stormwater, et cetera. And I'm taking it this was the ideal point. So, my, what I was wondering is, could we add some pines, some, the same trees you have over here in through this area, so that as they grow, they reach a maximum of 40 feet, this, some of this would be occluded in through here. In other words, as close to the tree as you can get, probably away from the panels, I know there's a distance you have to have, I think, of 40 feet away from the tree from the solar array.
Yep.
So, if you can track some trees in through here, that's my only final concern. That's it.
Where's he pointing, the south or the...
Could you please, wait till you get a microphone to explain?
Michael, what direction is that for the record that you're pointing at?
It would be...
You're looking north.
Southeast, southeast.
Yeah, but you're looking northwest.
East, southeast boundary, or...
Yeah.
It's at the southeast, you're looking northwest, yeah.
As I was saying, we talked to our engineers, and we're looking into that. We don't want to, as the chairman I pointed out, make changes to that basin.
No.
And...
We don't want you to, I know we went into that review.
And we're looking to make sure we don't have to adjust our line of disturbance. One idea he came up with was shrubs that could grow to the height of eight feet, and those could, would have a thickness that would help during the leaf-off periods of the year.
Not where you're looking down, because that's a higher elevation.
It'd be more for the roads.
Yeah. And, because you're looking up, obviously.
Yeah.
And that's an idea, if you can explore it. I know that the Peach Hill Park group, I was happy when you met with the idea that you're going to do something, what I'll call interpretive signage over there.
Yeah, actually, as you can see from the visual assessment, panels will be visible even in leaf on. However, just to remind you...
A small portion, I mean, it's not a huge...
Yeah, just...
It's, it is very small.
But you're going to see a big part of the array during leaf off, but like I said, I was up there. And I'm just from the apex, from various points along the way if you're going up a trail.
And if you recall, it was really just one point they were noticing. We helped them find other points. But the thing is, I wanted to remind you that when talking to Tom Myring, he actually wanted some screening, but also wanted some visibility.
Right.
And he wanted, and we're planning to provide a interpretive or educational sign along with the Catskill Overlook sign right near, right next to, right next to it. That will be a kind of a pentographic view and indicating where people can spot the panels. So we're going to be providing that sign, just a reminder of what we said last time. Also, we're, we've talked to the park about putting a park bench right there.
Yep.
It'll be donated from Cypress Creek. It'll be helping, there is already one park there, but we can position this other park bench so that you, people who want to get a glimpse of the solar panels will be able to sit in our donated park bench. And also, we're looking at one meadow having pollinators of wildflowers. He, he pointed out there was three meadows and the meadow closest to the apple orchard that they have there. Not, not a peach orchard. They're trying to grow peaches, but...
It's all apples, even though it's Peach Hill Park.
Yeah. But yeah, we looked into that and that is also something that was very feasible to offer the park is having a whole meadow that is full of wildflowers.
I, I thought all the meadows were proposed to be pollinators.
No, he's talking about...
Offsite.
Offsite.
At Peach Hill.
Oh, yeah. Peach Hill Park, yeah. Our, it's basically our mitigation measures for...
There's a lot of meadows over there.
Yep.
I misunderstood. I thought he was talking about...
There's a lot. That's, I mean, I'm satisfied that for purposes of seeker, there's going to be some mitigation, whether it's additional screening, whether it's the measures that they propose.
Mm-hmm.
Either way, if you're, if you're doing something that's, again, educational and interpretive, so that people understand that this may be something that you're going to see more of. I mean, I made a comment and I was told it was a low bar, but having grown up in Texas and Louisiana, I grew up seeing oil rigs and packed cars. They weren't so pretty, but at night they called, people call them Christmas trees, because they were lit up that way. But that was, in other words, we learned that, that energy actually comes from someplace. It's not just a switch when you click it on. And that was actually important for me growing up. I did work offshore, grew up in the oil business, which I'm glad to see that solar's replacing it.
And I could, I could point out that we actually have a, I have a project in Geneva, the Strauss Solar Project. And as part of their site plan approval, we had to make, it was near a school. Actually, Mr. Campitello was the zoning manager for that project. And they actually, it was, being near a school, they wanted at least one location, kiosk area, where students could come by and actually have a good full view of the solar panels. So, yeah, yeah, I agree. There's, it's, there is an interest in having some visibility along with the screen.
So are you committing to the interpretive signage as part of your proposal?
Yes.
So the offset improvement is proposed.
In Peach Hill Park, yes.
I should have added, I had an email from Mr. Myring stating, concluding basically what you said, that you had a great meeting and you'd agreed upon some measures that they thought would mitigate adequately. And again, it's primarily because he thought, he thinks that, they think that it's important to educate future generations about what we're going to be seeing and why it's better for the landscape to producing energy productively, as opposed to just living in its natural state and burning fossil fuels. So more or less quoted. Ms. Axelston, your, your final memo was pretty simple with the points. It mostly talked, the two most important that I thought were the discussion of the screening we're just having or mitigative measures, and then also the decommissioning plan. Can you go into detail about what you were discussing with the decommissioning plan?
Sure. I mean, most, most of the plan notation comments that were requested before have been addressed. And so... Basically, the, the projected net decommissioning cost that's shown, while it's understandable based on salvage value, the whole point was for the town's purposes, that the removal bond should be based on the disassembly and disposal, et cetera. But the town's estimation shouldn't give any credit for the salvage value. Because I don't believe that the town...
That noted. The reason why I'm bringing this up is because this is why we didn't actually have a resolution to approve. We still haven't come to a conclusion. I have to, we have to write a recommendation to the town board in terms of the decommissioning plan and a possible removal bond. At our agenda meeting, when we had this discussion, they have a year, they have a long lease. The town doesn't really have the staffing to track bonds, because they have to be renewed periodically. This did, I mean, I have spoken to the comptroller and we're going to have a meeting with the town board and the comptroller's office about how to handle bonds for the future, because they're not really in the planning board purview.
Right.
We make a recommendation for the amount, and then it goes bye-bye to us. That's all we ever know. The town only calls them when they're going to have to execute the action. The reason why I'm leaning personally, and I want to discuss this with everybody, is to not require the bond, is how are we going to know what it's going to cost in 30 years?
Oh, Lord.
That's a long time away. In addition, we don't know that they'll not be operating it, or even a successor agency. In the notes that you submitted for the decommissioning plan, you mentioned that within a certain time period, if the company is sold or change ownership, whatever, there'll be a new decommissioning plan signed with the new company. But unless there's a really attentive board with a good engineer every year when it's up for renewal, or periodically, every five years, you say, oh, that bond's not enough anymore, it seems an undue burden on the town and the applicants, to be honest with you. To me, you'd be raising the cost of solar energy by having to tie up at least some amount of cash in this. So this is for everyone's discussion, but I just don't think it's very practical to do this. At the same time, the decommissioning plan only refers to the company, doesn't refer to the owner. And I'm wondering if there's a way to change that so that there's a recourse that if somehow, let's just be hypothetical, there's a flood and earthquake and California falls off and the company's gone. Everyone's dead. So there's no company there, and then it stops operating or something. What do you do, how would we then go through, if the operator's not going to decommission it themselves, how would we?
I believe the, the option is for the town to come in and do the decommissioning and place it as a lien on the property, which ultimately gets to the owner.
Right.
Right. That's, I didn't find that specified in the decommissioning plan. Is that automatically assumed?
It's in our statute.
Right. So we don't have to add that as an extra line item with the agreement?
So I think the, the town board's going to be looking for guidance on whether you're proposing the bond or proposing some other agreement wherein a lien could be placed on the property. So we would want them to agree to that in writing ahead of time. And also, the owner should sign that agreement as well.
That's what I was getting at, is it's just the company, and I think we need to have the owner there as well, because if the town has to come and take the action to recuperate its costs, recompense the expenses of taxpayers doing this individual site, we'd have to, there'd be no other option but to place a tax lien for the full value.
Right.
So I just want to see that added to it.
Okay.
And that's pretty picky to me as well.
It's agreeable.
You who are speaking for the owner there, yeah.
The item or the...
Your suggestions. But well, is this, could this be all part of a condition of approval?
I think it would have to be, because you're going to have to negotiate with the town afterwards. But I know the, the town attorney specifically said, I don't want to talk to them until you guys come up with a recommendation. And I've been postponing this, because I wanted to make sure we were all ready to go. So we could consider making that a condition of approval fairly easily.
What have you done in the past?
Yeah, it's, it's pretty common for decommissioning details to be ironed out as a condition of approval.
Do you typically put up bonds for removal?
Yeah.
And they just renew those every year after year after year? You can speak, please do. Yes.
Oh, here I am.
Here he comes.
If you're making, if you're making the journey all the way here, we should hear from you.
Show some light for us.
Jeff Johnson, I'm a developer lead for, for the Northeastern Community Solar Projects in New York. Good to be here. I would caveat it, caveat this by saying that a lot of the bonds we're issuing are, these are all pretty new mechanisms. So as far as the, the annual maintenance that's required, you know, it's still a little bit to be seen, but generally, the way we're doing this is issuing this as a condition of approval and just making sure that the language that we're including in those bonds that towns are comfortable with, from a sort of time management standpoint, but also just a general coverage standpoint for folks who aren't sort of convinced by the, the salvage value of these projects and want to make sure there's coverage there. So that's kind of a, a high level answer, I would say.
So you've been doing bonds in most communities, because these are relatively new. They haven't had, haven't had to deal with the fact that they're renewable and someone has to track that every year, and that the amount that the bond was first posted for
May or may not have.
May or may not be the right amount, once it's all taken care of, because...
In my mind, a performance bond is generally something that you use for something with a finite period of time. So you're building a road, you have a beginning, you have an end, and the bond is supposed to ensure that the road gets completed.
Yeah.
Something like this, which...
It's a lease.
It could go on for years past 30. A bond doesn't, to me, doesn't seem like the right mechanism.
Me neither.
What other mechanisms have you used when not using bonds?
I would say the three mechanisms are either no decommissioning plan, or no decommission bond, or, or anything provided at all.
Like that.
Um, decommission bond, or some sort of escrow account upfront, which is obviously very capital intensive, and something that generally isn't viable for projects. So those are the three mechanisms.
Well, like I said, we don't want to raise the cost of the energy that's being produced. That's, that's kind of runs counterfactual to what, because people are always going to try to buy the cheapest energy they can. And these costs have gone down so much, and of course, they comport with our governor's plan to go 50% renewables by 2030. So I certainly would suggest we don't, our recommendation would be there would be no bond, but they work out the agreement.
If I, if I could, if I could just jump in for a minute.
Please do.
When, when I saw the new law and saw the provision for decommissioning, it reminded me of the provisions that are typically put in zoning for tele, telecommunications facility, towers. And, you know, the concern there is very different. It's more about having a large structure that's visible, become deteriorated, become dangerous, become an attractive nuisance, et cetera, et cetera. So I can see it for that. For this particular use, it isn't, I mean, anything that's left unmanaged could become dangerous, but this isn't a tall, gangly structure. It's not horribly visible, and, and the fact of the matter is that there is some salvage value.
Yep.
Don't take my commentary the wrong way. The point was to guide the town to say, that's not something a town would normally engage in. But there's sort of a built-in incentive to not let the stuff go into disrepair, or if a site becomes less feasible to salvage the equipment. So I guess I feel it's not, you know, the intention for the decommissioning bond or account or whatever. Isn't quite as clear to me in comparison to other facilities. The other thing is that the site plans have a great deal of notation on them.
They do.
And so there are some enforcement options for decommissioning. So that's another thing to weigh when you're considering whether it's escrow or bond or not, that there's, there's the potential for enforcement.
Discussion from the board? Can you, wait a minute?
That sounds great.
Discussion from the board? Are we in agreement that I should write a letter recommending that there not be a performance bond or surety bond established?
Yeah, I agree.
Yes.
Yes.
It may take some time, but it works to your favor.
Very much agreeable, yeah. Condition of approval.
So what I think we should do, what I think we should do, we're going to, we're going to take action on seeker tonight. And is there a way you can get back to us fairly quickly about any additional screening that's, that's possible in that area that I highlighted over there?
We can, yeah, we'll, I'll give you something from the engineer soon that addresses that, but we're, we're still trying to find, we wanted to get your thoughts on the brush. You told me that it wasn't going to be tall enough for some other locations, so we'll propose other screening, screening. We just wanted to give you the visual assessment tonight to show you what was possible, and then hear your thoughts on. So would you like all those locations screened or the...
So what I meant was, is as I said, this area that's below your stormwater detention area, I don't want you to denude the whole thing of the natural vegetation that's there.
Yeah, just replace.
But if we could selectively plant some pines in through here, that's all I'm really looking for.
Replace existing, and then with...
Well, no, not even replacing. I mean, it depends on how thick it is and like if you...
It's pretty thick.
Right in through there, it's pretty thick.
But I mean, if they remove the lanthis and put, and put in a...
There's invasives inside there.
Okay, yeah.
Tad's here. Tad, is it possible for not specific tree locations to be shown, but say a number of trees in general areas? Would that be okay in terms of them getting a CO ultimately? I know you don't want me to tie your feet to the ground on these things at night.
There should be at least an area where there's a request for additional trees to be inters, interplanted.
That's what I was showing in through here. It's just this little U shape right in through here. And again, it's because when I drove by and walked around, everything I saw was deciduous. I didn't see, there's a couple of scrub cedars that are small. That's really about it. So if we could introduce some eastern white pines, I think that would take care of my concerns, because again, during leaf off on Peach Hill Park when you're up there, you're pretty much going to see this whole area.
Yeah.
From very, not just spots, I mean, you're not, you're going to see that when you're walking up one of the trails.
Yeah.
And again, it's not to disguise it completely, because again, there's an educational purpose to this as well, but to maybe soften it a little bit. I'm talking no more than maybe 10.
10 pines?
A broad area. Yeah.
We would need the number, tree name, the height at planting, because obviously we don't want one-foot trees.
I believe they're this high. I think you're proposing three-inch caliper diamond breast height.
Yeah, spruce and cedar.
It's, it's on the landscaping plan. They've already got, they've got spruces and pines.
Pines.
Eastern white pines. So that's, I'm just looking to transfer some, or add the same ones along another boundary, if that's possible.
Okay, I'll look into the feasibility of that and then get back to you on that.
This way, we can adjourn the public hearing to the next meeting in two weeks, and...
You don't want to prove it for Mr. Chan's, Mr. Murphy's last night?
I'm afraid we don't have a resolution prepared is the problem.
Okay.
We don't, we don't have a resolution for approval, because the, the screening issue needed to be resolved.
Right, right. That's all.
And just, just to be clear, our, our whole memo was prefaced at the beginning saying, we offer the following comments, which may be addressed as conditions of approval, so. I mean, it would be great to have more of them addressed, but...
I also, Ms. Moss is here, but, sorry to, oh. Ms. Moss made some comments that I can type up and send to you, but you'll need to contact 911 for the new address of Dorsey Lane. I'll, I'll type these up and send them to you. I don't, I didn't understand this one. It says trees for screening under power line?
The trees that are planted along Dorsey...
Eastern pine?
Directly under an electric line.
They need to come...
I don't know if you can scoot them a few feet.
Yeah, they need to come in.
Or not, exactly.
Why 20-foot wide road? And why 20-foot wide road beyond the access easement? These are your comments?
I was wondering why that is, but I understand the fire department requires...
Yeah, 20-foot wide is National Fire Protection Association with requirement.
And we have at the, in the latest submission, the letter from the fire department saying that you've taken them and they're all happy that you've shown them how to correct everything. You need to add Deches County, New York in the title blocks. I'll type these up, because these can all be conditions.
Sure.
Add the property owner on the cover sheet, add signature blocks, grid number should add 6263-03. Check details around gravel access, the DEC specifications for solar farms. You said, I thought it needs structural fabric beneath gravel to not be included as impervious?
Right. I was talking to Pete a little bit about that on the SWIP review. The DEC has a specific detail for, I think it's six or eight inches of gravel on top of a fabric thing in order to not be considered impervious. And I didn't know how your SWIP was configured, so I wasn't sure whether or not the detail that's shown on the plan matches the SWIP. Just want to make sure that they're together.
Okay.
As I said, I'll type these up and send them to you.
Great, appreciate that.
And then there's some comments about waiver requests, and I believe, you know what? I have to go back to your original application, because they've been very dense reading each time. I can't remember if you made waiver requests for some topo, significant trees, et cetera. We can go through the checklist and see what those need to be. You can add that in into a narrative. But otherwise, we should be okay. So who has this file for our resolution tonight, our action tonight?
Brian.
Before the board considers the resolution, I just want to note that it's based, the negative declaration is based on two assumptions. One was that they would be providing the interpretive signage as mitigation. That's an offsite improvement that they're proposing. The second is that they will be planting evergreens in the southeast property buffer.
Somewhere.
Somewhere, so.
And Ms. Axelston had sent around a part two of the EAF a while back. Did everyone have a chance to read it?
Yes.
Can we, so then for the record, we can agree that we've already read and agreed with it, because she applied it, so you can just go to the resolution?
Bingo.
He doesn't read part, oh, because that's in the resolution.
That is the part two, yes.
Good. Resolution adopting seeker determination non-significance, Salt Point Solar, June, July 18, 2018, resolution 2018-01A. Whereas, 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 whereas. Whereas, 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 whereas. Now therefore be a resolved that for the reasons set forth in parts one, two, and three of the EAF, and the attached notice determination of significance, the planning board hereby adopts a negative declaration, finding that the project as proposed will not result in any significant adverse environmental impacts, and that a draft resolution impact statement will not be prepared. Be a further resolved that the planning board hereby directs the secretary to the planning board to send the attached notice of determination of significance to the environmental notice bulletin for publication and to make all other required filings. Second.
Can you further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously. Do you need a copy of this, Brian? Just, you can take, oh, you already have one. That's right, we gave you one earlier.
Thank you.
I forgot. And make it a motion to adjourn this to the August...
First meeting.
First meeting?
August 1st.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And we will consider taking action that night, if you can give me some information about any additional screening.
That'd be fantastic.
So just a reminder, August, in August, we'll be at 6:00 PM?
Oh, that's right. One more time for the record.
Oh, right.
Anyone watching at home, our day, our times move up an hour. We'll be meeting at 6:00 PM rather than 7:00 PM.
Okay, great. I'll be there. And my, hopefully my last appearance on the YouTube channel. And Mr. Murphy, thank you for your, Mr. Murphy, thank you for your 14 years of service. You can still attend at the August 1st meeting for...
Watching on TV.
Okay. I'll give you a wave. I'll give you a wave. Thank you very much.
Thank you, yes.
Did you want to send that letter prior to the resolution of approval, or do you want to incorporate that into the resolution?
I'm going to go ahead and write it up and let, I mean...
Let everyone look at it.
Can I get a motion to authorize me to send the letter to the town? Can I get a motion to authorize me to send the letter to the town?
Second. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
My goodness. Okay, so we'll get that going in advance. That way, once we send the letter, which I'll get out this week, you can go ahead and call Mr. Raplansky and Supervisor Ward to set up a meeting to start the discussion.
Okay, great.
In advance of our approval.
That's the meeting with the town board?
Yes.
Okay, sounds great.
I think what I would suggest you do is first contact Attorney Raplansky and the supervisor just directly for maybe an informal meeting with just those two and possibly one other town board member. So there's non-quorum.
Okay.
Just talk about what you want to do and then they can do it. You can do it publicly and then come to a committee and agree and that's it. And that way that condition will be done.
Okay, we'll do that. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda, we are now in workshop mode. By the way, ladies and gentlemen, no more public hearings, is stats creed lot line realignment. I believe the architect is here. Yes. I'm going to try to summarize this quickly. In essence, I'm going to get it done quickly, I promise you. In essence, we have two, we have two adjoining properties, 58 and 60. Number 60 is selling land, or you could say dunning land to 58. Number 60 has a garage, an apartment above a garage. This was approved as a storage facility for the garage, not an apartment. Apartments now require special use permit. In addition, since this was changed in an authorized fashion, that sounds better than illegally, it now, the density is no longer allowed because this is waterfront where I live as well. I'm a neighbor of the street and it's one dwelling unit per 2.5 acres. Now, 58 River Road, because they had a loose relationship, the two neighbors when they were both living there, put a generator on, on the opposite side of the property line. In addition, put a fence on the opposite side of the property line. So the generator is right there. The fence is shown right there. So they're selling, they are buying this land, they are selling this land. So now his.
Everything's legal.
Everything's legal. In the meantime, they also, they need a density variance. It's possible that the architect has made an argument that Ms. Moss is not, I think, fully determined yet, but accessory apartments also require that the, there's no internal entrance, that the staircase is, the entrance being closed, it's exposed right now. The architect has argued that because of the grade change, this goes up, that essentially that is the first floor. Again, Ms. Moss has to take a look at this. So they may need a variance for that. They need a variance for the side yard setback where the generator is even buying this much property. So we've outlined a process.
You got it.
Where we will be proceeding with subdivisions first while they're simultaneously applying for the variances. And then once the subdivisions are done, then we could then consider a site plan approval here. We would likely recommend, because the generator requires in this district site plan approval as well, since it already exists, Ms. Moss would likely give us a recommendation for a site plan waiver. She typically does that for these kinds of structures. And she's smiling, which looks pretty good.
So subdivision with variances in parallel, then special use permit?
And site plan at the same time.
And site, okay.
Because this requires a special use permit. And anything you want to add?
I could try and keep Mrs. Moss happy with discussion of what's the first floor? Would you like me to argue that now?
Do we have a door to the, to the natural grade from the apartment?
So in your, in the instructions, number nine, it says stairways leading to any floor or story above the first floor. And then it adds in the word where practical. And so when you have a site visit, you will see that practical doesn't exist. This is, it's a very tight apartment. When I take jobs, I always go in and just make sure they will meet building code. This one barely will meet building code. So a stair inside was not built in the 1990s. There is a stair outside. So the question to me was, what's the first floor? And so I went back into your zoning code and there is no definition of floor or first floor.
I'm not surprised. So just so we're clear, this came up at the meeting. The code doesn't say where practicable.
It's, it's in your instructions. So either your instruction needs to change or the code needs to be updated.
Well, the code is what, is what rules. And it says stairways leading to any floor or story above the first floor shall be located within the walls of the building, period.
Right. So, so then the definition comes up and the question comes up to me, what's the first floor? And so again, it's not in your zoning code as to what establishes first floor. It is in the building code. And so the building code establishes that the first floor is the first habitable level above grade. So the garage is not a habitable level. It also establishes a relationship between the first floor and grade. So my argument is that the first floor is the apartment. The first floor is not.
I get to weigh in here now. When you say that the first floor for the garage is not habitable, if you enclose that, if you enclose that up and made the whole thing an apartment, it would be habitable. If this, these become doors, it's going to be a two-story building. I've been inside there many a time myself.
Okay.
I mean, just saying, and that's the reason why I think Tad asked you if there's a door on the backside is, is this habitable without that? In other words, I think that's where you were going.
Is there a connection between the first floor and the second, between the garage and the first floor inside? No.
I think she was, she was looking at it in a way, you have lot to houses where you walk in the front, but then in the back it drops.
Right, like a walkout basement.
They have an entry in the front. And that was the question that she asked of the avenue.
An at-grade entry, in other words. I know that because, so you, we'd be talking about, wait, my bearings here, sorry. Would there be a door here? Because you're arguing that this is the, this makes this the floor, this grade change. But it looks to me as though this grade is still associated with the garage rather than the floor. Because I think this is, the part of the apartment is only this little tiny bit right here, I believe.
Yes.
Yeah. So, but that's, that's, I would suggest you and Ms. Moss discuss that offline.
Okay.
Because if you disagree with her, you would then need to go to the ZBA to see what, that's what would be the next administrative remedy? Is that the right legal term?
He could either seek an interpretation.
Right.
Of Ms. Moss's decision, an interpretation of the code, enclose the staircase so it meets the code, or seek a use variance.
Would that be a use variance? Yeah, because it's not an area. Okay.
Well.
It's the requirement for.
The requirement that this be enclosed would, would, would be, I guess, a use variance. Okay.
Now, the interesting thing about the code is that it allows for two single family dwellings on a lot. If this were considered a second single family dwelling, we wouldn't care about the staircase.
Oh, the quirks of our code. So you guys can resolve.
And we can resolve that.
Can you say your name for the record?
It would most likely require a recreation fee.
I think a lot of people know you, but I forgot. I mean, I know you.
So my, my name's David Freeman. I represent 58 and 60 River Road.
Right.
Right. So consultants' comments?
Actually, we didn't do a memo.
There's not really much of a memo to do on this.
There isn't much to say. Okay. So the one thing that I noticed was that it'd be great if the bulk requirements table had addressed all of the bulk requirements. And I would like to see an existing column and a proposed column. So the requirements, existing conditions, proposed conditions. And one of the reasons is that it's, I think it's worth it for both property owners to take quote unquote credit for existing non-complying conditions. They, you know, they exist. They would be allowed to continue as they are and there will be some changes. And then in the proposed column, you'd be able to show how certain aspects will become more conforming and others less and it'll be a lot clearer. And then you can make notes about what's non-complying and what needs a variance. And then it's all laid out and clear on paper. And then I had the question about the generator because I didn't understand if they were giving the generator away or.
No.
No.
It's on the, it's on the other property at the moment where, if the property lot line realignment goes through.
Right.
It'll be on the correct property, but it will require a variance.
Okay.
Side yard setback.
And actually, yeah, that was one of the reasons that I wanted the bulk table to include all of the required, required values, et cetera, et cetera, because you have setbacks for principal building and accessory. So.
Mr. Sotero, any comments?
The only thing that, that I saw when we met the last Friday was just that we should show the sewage disposal system on parcel one.
58 River Road.
Yes.
I don't really know where it is because there's a lot, you know, stuff there, but it's got to be, it's got to be somewhere. Now, I don't know if it's, you know, we were thinking, well, maybe, because I had asked, well, you know, how come there was so much room on, you know, the lot line change towards like the river? And I was wondering, well, maybe the septic system is on the wrong lot or something.
I have asked.
Not that that would ever happen.
I have asked the current owner, we were working on it.
Not that that would ever happen, but just in case.
Just in case.
So anyway, so that was our only comment.
Didn't we think we should have the site plan for both properties, 58 and 60, for the septic?
So what?
Just to make sure.
Listen, we're going to show that on, on this, which is the subdivision. So the subdivision plan should show all the septic over both properties.
Right.
And then he'll end up doing a separate site plan for 60.
Right.
And a waiver.
A waiver for 58.
But at this time, the subdivision, we need everything because of the lot line change.
Nobody's going to worry about it.
And I should add, having lived there 25 years as a neighbor, the prior owner also took liberties with this property at 58. Sorry. Building houses over existing houses, putting in pools with no building permit, but it's all been taken care of now, except for these, now the neighboring property has to take care of its unapproved changes. So Ms. Moss, I skipped you. Comments? Now, you've been diving into this for a while. That's why I understood it because I talked to you and followed everything. Ms. Paul Dore, any other comments?
So I echo the bulk table, the septic.
Yep.
And just, there's two encroachments onto the land of New York Central Lines and they're shown as existing and the board can't approve offsite encroachments on the railroad property. So.
We either add a note saying that we're not approving.
Either have to remove them or what this board has accepted in the past is a note saying that the board is not approving these as, you know, part of the waiver subdivision site plan or special use permit.
Okay, I'll get that from you. My understanding was the board had already worked with the 58 property on that at one point or had heard that?
I think so.
Nope.
I'm looking at Ted.
No, we waived site plan. We waived site plan for residential. We typically do that unless it's a monstrosity, which sometimes there might have been, but that's subject to opinion. But we typically waive residential uses for site plan, even if it's on the river, as long as it's not somehow making, including a view improperly. So we didn't, we did not, because we waived it, we didn't actually have that shown. We just saw elevations.
So I will, I will get that from you.
I'll, I'll send you later. Yeah.
Yeah. So because to remove a portion of the pool decking around would not be easy, nor would the other patio, to be honest with you, that's been there for all, since I can remember. So, but anyway, that's just to note that that'll be added on once we consider approval. Any questions from the board? Feel free to weigh on in.
I just had a question. So if you're realigning the lot, why didn't you, why don't we realign the lot so that the generator is at the right setback?
There's also a question.
I'm not the first person to ask that, apparently.
The garage will also be the appropriate distance from the, will meet the town setback.
One or the other was going to be violated.
Right.
Gotcha.
So.
Okay.
And we may discover the septic is on some other property.
Which is why we're asking for it now.
Any other questions from the board? So I believe tonight that we are ready to set a public hearing and we're ready to go ahead and classify it. It's going to be unlisted and also circulate. Yep, Department of Health because we have to know that the septic for the accessory apartment that was never approved is adequate. Right? So who has this file?
So we would need, we would need a motion to classify as unlisted and to circulate to.
Oh, we don't have a resolution. That's right.
Ah, okay.
Okay.
You could do it by motion.
Megan, I get a motion to classify this as unlisted under SECRE and circulate to Department, Duchess County Department of Behavioral and. Community Health. And is there any Board of Appeals? Chan moved. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. The motion carries. And Megan, a motion to set the public hearing for September 5th.
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
See, it seems complicated, but with your assistance too, we're going to get through this. Thank you, Mr. Freeman.
It's got something to do with old crazy, the river.
The next item on the agenda is Real Ole, is it Football Club, FC Soccer? This would be an amended site plan application. This is located at 95 Valid Avenue. This would be, and welcome back. And I heard about your horrible accident.
What happened?
The park about Nicole threw me down the stairs.
It's pushed, not through, pushed. Pushed when a man up. Now you were riding, you were riding and. You were riding and you flipped over and.
That's correct.
Microphone, let him speak and don't make him hold it.
That's why we've got soccer because you can't use your arm.
Local bike, local bike club crash, bike crash. Yep.
Motorcycle or?
No, bicycle.
Bicycle. It could have been far worse. You had a helmet on.
What's left of it, yes.
Really?
Yeah. I'm pretty sure my wife has all my bikes on eBay right now. I haven't really checked.
Okay, so first, there are several of us who've had an opportunity to speak to the young gentleman behind the application. As always, I want to say thank you for investing in our community. I discussed this with all the board when I, after our first meeting and I said, anything that we can do to reactivate this commercial recreation area that's going to bring in young families who can then with their kids eat, shop, whatever they want to do as their tournaments are over. That sounds exciting, but I'm usurping your place. Do you want to give a quick narrative of what you're proposing there, Nicole? Thank you.
Nicole Patty from the LRC Group. So basically the project is to amend the site plan, special use permit for the Gilbert Farm Recreation Center. We're going to be transforming the existing driving range area to multi-field soccer training facility and game area. They're going to utilize the grass fields within the existing pole mounted netting, which will remain. And basically, we're going to work to regrade and resurface the grass area that's, that's there now. Very minor changes to the overall site. You'll see, I'm sure in the cover letter, a lot of waivers were requested as part of the site plan application, but really looking to utilize the existing space to create something new and something good for the community. I'm going to hand it over to Patrick.
First off, I want to say thank you for having us and thank you for all the work you guys do. It's just sitting in and listening to everything, the amount of information you guys consume is just incredible and remembering it all. So a little intro about myself. I don't want to overload you guys with more information, but I'm a product of the Duchess County area. I played soccer for John Jay High School and was trained by family members and my dad behind me to, my dream was to play professionally. And like most kids that play sports, their dream is to do it and percentages are usually not in their favor. I was actually able to pursue it and achieve a good amount of it. I took my career over to Spain and I saw how academies were ran there. And eventually the economy in Europe took a change and I came back and started educating the youth in the sport I love. And it turned into leading me here, which is actually, I enjoy more educating kids in soccer and seeing them use what I teach them and applying it more than I ever played. So I didn't know that was going to be my outcome and I'm glad it's here and I'm in front of all you great people and looking forward to being a part of Hyde Park.
Let us say the same thing back. And by the way, very appropriate attire now that I'm looking.
Well, I figured that you are who you normally dress in majority of the time and this is a real reflection of myself.
I went back and changed.
And I promise I'll look just as good as you gentlemen and ladies in the, in the future.
So there, essentially, what's happening here is, as you saw in the application, they'll be doing some regrading because before it was graded such that this stormwater, to prevent it from flowing back down to the neighborhood.
Right.
If you recall, it went into a stormwater detention basin, which I don't know if I can still, right around, actually, I can't see very well from here. That's what I thought right through here. But it was tilted ever so slightly. It needs to go a little more flat. It'll still be, it's not that much heavy regrading, but this area is in the 100-year flood, flood plain.
Okay.
So Tad and Peter are working on that as the stormwater manager, or stormwater management officers. And the, as you saw also in the narrative, there'll be these soccer fields ultimately. They're starting work, I believe, on this through a reservoir and sediment control permit. And what they will be doing is, is they, they're also, while these are grass and they'll remain grass, it has to be a better quality of grass and they're going to irrigate them. So that's essentially it. You know, they may have ideas later on for adding bleachers, et cetera, but for right now, they're sticking with the approved site plan, which shows the two commercial recreation buildings here with associated parking. And they're adding a little bit of parking that'll be relocated, I believe, after some discussion.
Yes, after reading, speaking with Pete and reading the memo, we are going to be relocating the proposed parking area to be just further away from the buffer.
From, yeah, from the, with the adjacent area for the wetland. But otherwise, they'll be adding improvements in through here, but it'll be very much the same. In the EAF that was originally submitted, it more or less just said the traffic's going to be the same, but we asked them for a little bit of refinement through the International Traffic Engineers Manual for these kinds of tournaments. But we've all discussed this in offline meetings, but do you, do you want to go back through and kind of talk about, or, let me turn it over to you.
Traffic?
Yeah.
And, well, we, we talked through this with Patrick and company on what they would have there. And we, and I can hand this into the board, but there's essentially eight planned teams as part of the club, various ages.
And different numbers of team players.
Different numbers of team players. And when you add them together, it's a total of about 112 team, club members, overall age groups. Practices would be during the weeks, five to eight 30, staggered by group. Not everybody's there at once, obviously. Principally driven by the two major fields and the subfields that would be around it. The games, tournaments would be every, well, as we're saying here, alternating Saturdays in the fall only. Those are conducted principally on the two major fields. It works out a period of about four hours. And I think you even said. fields. It works out a period of about four hours, and I think you even said eleven to three, something like that, which is better, Saturday AM timeframe. When you go to IT to look for something.
There's nothing.
Well, yeah, actually, we went, we went back to the last, the last approval, the amendment of the driving range to include mini-golf, and that had, using the IT number and a code, which resulted in, I think, fifty, fifty point two Saturday AM peak. That's from that application. So, we use the same ITE manual for soccer, it relates it by, in gaming, soccer games, it relates it to fields. So, the field use under that scenario on a Saturday morning times two is fifty-seven point four six peak hour. So.
All right.
In this first, in that first phase of their project to get their, get their club
reoriented, up and running here with the, with the people that they have, we're pretty close to the last approval for the Gilbert Farm Rec Center.
That was just fifty for the mini-golf. There was also traffic for the, the two buildings and for the, the driving range.
Yeah, yeah. The, well, the driving range was included in that calculation.
Right, the driving range and the mini-golf.
Driving range and mini-golf, it was forty-four and six, I think the math would, to put them together. Yeah, so the, the buildings obviously are separate. Their desire to be done by these guys eventually, there'll probably be some configuration change to fit suit their use, maybe not. But it's, it's not something that they're building now. And much in the same manner that the driving range was approved, they would need to return to you guys, have that conversation, figure out a, a new calculation based on whatever the proposed traffic generation and all that would be then. So, the improvements out at nine G were put off in the driving range till that phase was kicked in for that reason, because that was a, a big addition to, to the site. So.
So when we.
And that fits their use, their needs as well.
For the four board members, soon to be five, who were not up here when we evaluated this, we did SECR on the entire site, but any measures that were, that were associated with this in terms of the improvements to this driving area were more or less attached to this phase. So, the peak number here for the driving range and for the mini-golf was fifty-four, and for what the activity will be here now, it would be fifty-seven. So, I would say that's comparable, and these won't change. We can look back at this at some point in the future when you're ready to build and know what you want to do exactly there, because I know you're young, you have plenty of ideas, thank heavens, for the future of my community. To have young people in here investing and having ideas is great. So, I, that's, we were trying to just figure if we could reaffirm prior SECR, and part, the only impact we could think of that was a little bit different here was traffic. I should also add.
And water usage.
Water usage, is that a SECR impact?
Sure.
Well, we have to look at the irrigation well, I mean.
Right.
Mm-hmm.
Exactly sure how we're going to look at it, but we need to.
You mean for impact on drawdown in other wells?
Well.
Potentially.
Yeah.
The, the water.
I'm, no, no, I just, this is one of those things that I used to think stormwater was a SECR, but in truth, you're going to get a SWIP or not. I don't really concern to be.
We're talking about irrigation well.
Yeah, but, so, I was trying to say, what's the impact you're looking at here? So it'd be drawdown on.
Drawdown on neighboring wells, depending on, depending on where, where the irrigation well will be, and then some, I know it's hard to approximate where neighboring like wells are, but, you know, looking at an overall map, you can probably get like some kind of an idea, and, you know, without knowing any kind of details on what the irrigation system is going to be, like, will it go into like a tank and then be pumped out of a tank into, you know, the pipes, or is it just, you know, I don't know, so.
We need some more information on the, the delta between, you know, we have a, as you know, a very thorough negative declaration.
I remember.
That was done back in two thousand and seven, and it hit a lot of these issues, and I think we even addressed water, because there was concern about water consumption in those buildings.
Right.
Yep.
We'll go ahead and finish, then I'll answer the other guy's question.
So, I was going to say, I think it'd be helpful to have a nar, just a narrative with your information on traffic and water usage, just where things are changing.
Right.
Yeah, sure. Traffic as a, as a memo we had created, we just hadn't reviewed it for correctness with their groups, with their clubs. So, I can give you that tonight. But, and just conversationally about irrigation, we hadn't talked about the details of that. We inherently don't want to draw from what is a public water, portable water, to, to non, non-drinking water. If there was an irrigation well, it makes all sense in the world to have it right in the middle, right close to where we would need it, which is literally hundreds of feet away from a lot of property. So, it makes the most sense for it to be in this area here. Would it, depending on how much they do ultimately, would it need a tank? It's possible. But a well that would draw and go into a storage tank for irrigation of the fields, say five hundred or more feet from the property line, I can tell you isn't going to create a drawdown, but we can be more precise about that as we know.
Just take a look at the information on page two of your negative declaration, which was pretty specific. It said, low volume of irrigation, only require one additional well with a volume equivalent to one residential well. So.
Yeah.
Is that changing, or is it not changing, from what we studied back in two thousand and seven?
Yeah, I, I have to reread that too, because I don't know if we, are you saying we proposed an irrigation well back then?
Yes.
It was.
Yeah.
It was. It was proposed, but not required. It was proposed if you needed it as you went through.
Right, and the, and the driving range proved to not need it.
And we did SECR on it, so that's why it was.
Yeah.
Why we did SECR on the idea of the well. I might add, I mean, for everybody else, this is all wetland over here.
I was going to say, it's a major.
It's not as if there's like.
Yeah.
You can, you can dig a couple feet down on Haven Road.
And in an irrigation well.
You can go in it down.
Pete, you may know a required depth, but we don't have to go too deep, as long as we have, have some water.
What'd you say?
The, on an irrigation well, we don't have to go very deep at all, as long as we have water to.
Right, yeah, as long as we have yield from it. So, I, I can't imagine that, I'll put it in writing, but I can't imagine that we'd need any more than a simple well that produced, you know, no more volume than a residential house. Yeah, I mean, and again, that's, that's the kind of stuff we're just looking, you know, to document so that, you know, we have it, that's all.
We remember we were sued that one time, and we want to make sure we're taking the required hard look.
Yes.
That's right, you were involved intimately in that, what am I saying?
That's why there's eighteen pages of findings there.
Another issue too with the wetland, that, I assume the reflagging on that wetland, the flagging has expired? So you are proposing disturbance in the area of the wetland?
No.
Nope, not at all.
They've removed all disturbance outside the adjacent area. So, I'm going to go and enter it under the record. The wetland that we're talking about, again, I'm a little kind of blind, it's in through here, I believe?
Yep.
No, I'm hitting the buildings.
Go around.
Right through there.
Keep going.
Keep going.
There you go.
Yep.
It also goes across the right. And then the direction that goes is from school.
Right.
So the board should discuss whether it needs to be reflagged, because he's coming near the adjacent area.
So, our practice is normally, as has been, let me rephrase that, to acquire recertification of wetland boundaries, redelineation. The reason why is because in each case we've done this, they could move, we've discovered they haven't, but they're also in raw virgin areas that are not disturbed. This is, there's a neighborhood here.
Completely disturbed.
There is a elementary school here, there's a junior high school here, this is all residential and through here, and there are various long parcels along here, they're disturbed, and this is cromelba ultimately along the way. This is not, at least in my opinion, and I'm not a certified wetlands biologist, but we've taken the training, this is not a high-quality wetland in terms of it serving endangered, threatened, and rare species. To avoid them having to go to the expense and the time of recertifying the wetlands and then having DEC sign off, we suggested to the applicant that they remove any proposed disturbance much further away from the adjacent area, so that even if they've migrated slightly, there wouldn't be any disturbance within the adjacent area. But that's, I'm making all this point because it's up for the board to decide. Like I said, to me, and you have to decide tonight, but to me, there's differences where we've done this before, because it's been undeveloped land, and this is, this whole area is disturbed. I mean, it was a driving range around it, so, in other words, endangered, threatened, and rare species would be highly unlikely to use it. That said, we don't want to degrade the quality further of the actual wetland itself. Only some areas contain water throughout the year. A lot of the rest of it is dry, but has hydrophytic vegetation, which is why it's marked the way it is.
We have, and we've agreed to move the parking that we drew on here around, closer to the existing fence line, which is all disturbed. And then literally, their work of massaging the grades of inside, it all happens inside the fence line, the existing fence line of the driving range. There isn't anything at all proposed outside of the fence line of the driving range, except for some parking spaces where the mini-golf presently is.
Right.
Already in the.
I can't see that from here, but there were, there were new spaces at the end of that parking lot.
And that's what they're going to.
They were going to go.
Move them.
They're going to move that.
Yes.
Right.
Yep.
So that there's no potential impact even to the adjacent area.
That's absolutely right, yep. So, and again, that was somewhat at my suggestion as well, because we just noticed it the other day when we were meeting. And I think I'm on record as trying to preserve and enhance natural topography and help wildlife. But again, I don't, this whole area stays preserved, and this is, this is actually a bit better quality complex over here in terms of species movement, et cetera, just because it's laced up and down along the way with wetlands and through here. This is a meandering, as I said, mostly dry. There's water, I think, actually, the water's offside.
Yeah.
The water's offside, sorry.
Yep, yeah, as I said, any, any and all, the slight reworking of the grading, and a little bit more so as you get up towards where the Rock Knoll is, is all inside the existing fence line of the driving range.
And, so let me go back to consultants. I started with you, Liz, Pete, then Victoria, and Ted, I didn't really move on, I skipped you. Any comments? Nope? Comments additional?
Sorry.
Yes?
I, I'm just going to recommend, I can email you the short EAF mapper blank, which taps into New York State DEC's database. And I grabbed it just to see what popped up, and I think in two thousand and seven, I don't know that that was in play or not. So I'll just, I'm going to email that to you, see you have it, and you might need to adjust a few questions and explain some things away. Okay?
It's, you're within the distance of the mastodon, so it's going to show you archaeological resources, just so you know. Everybody here up here know about the mastodon? Yes? Okay. There was a mastodon skeleton found not that far away in an adjoining neighborhood. It's not anywhere near this. I believe we dealt with this in two thousand and seven.
I believe we did.
Thank you.
I think we dealt with everything.
Everything back then, yeah, yeah. Anyway, again, this is an open area, this is not, there are not trees here, this is not where.
Absolutely, yep. Maintained lawn, it was all regraded back then.
Right, I would say, Ann used to say, there are not critters wandering around back there.
Cow pasture.
Just cow pasture, yeah. So, we've hit on all the notes, all the memo notes that I have. The existing special use permit is for non-motorized commercial recreation, and I believe we specified in through there are a lot of things that couldn't be done?
I believe so, but we'll read it again.
Okay. I remember, there's a whole list of things that you weren't allowed to do based on neighbor comments, I believe.
Correct. The high, the high points, of course, were.
Batting cages.
Batting cages, and anything relating to go-karts, which goes back a couple of decades of.
I remember that, yeah.
So, we'll like through to make sure that it still applies in this site, so we don't have to amend the special use permit either, because it's still in operation. And let me start from my right. Ms. DeNapoli, any comments or questions?
Not at this time, but I want to welcome you, and I think we are all very excited to see a new activity come to Hyde Park.
Mr. Oliver?
Welcome to Hyde Park, and thank you for considering our town to move your school and, and business to, and hopefully we can help you get started. Thank you.
Ms. Dexter?
I echo welcoming you to Hyde Park, and, you know, I, when I saw the for sale sign there, I'm like, oh, who's going to go in there? It's like, oh my God, you know, we've always say, we can't ever predict or name what someone else's vision is. So, I thank you for that. I just had a couple of questions, because I remember from the site plan visit from years ago, that there was a mound in the middle of the driving range that you said was quite difficult to beat back, and I was just wondering, how are you going, how are you going to address that for, for this?
Yeah, we have to, we have to figure out how to create a level playing field up there. And it's two-thirds of the way up through the range.
Yep.
It's out of the wetland, out of the floodplain area.
Yep.
And we have to just figure out how to, to grade that in and get that configuration so that it works.
Okay, okay. So you're still doing the engineering?
Well, there, yeah, there has to be, the lower area where, in the floodplain portion, it's easy. Talk about that, it's easy, it's really minor, minor movement of existing soil supplement with, with better, better grass, better appropriate planting. But that needs some work up there.
Okay, and that, you actually answered my next question, because I was like, if I remember, also, it wasn't, it wasn't a high quality, I can't see that you could just grow grass there. So you're going to have to do some.
Amendments to do, they've got to create that. And even, again, coming to the irrigation, that, they probably will have to do something, but there's a lot of water right there in the surface, so whatever they grow should, should stay high graded pretty well.
Okay.
That's a good, a good memory. When we met with Mr. Casamento, he pointed that out, that there was going to have to be a way for that little step up, and of course, that's why the floodplain is flat and low, because it floods. That's why it's ideal for playing, so. Any other, did you have another question?
No, I think as we, as we move forward, we'll, more may come out.
Thank you. Mr. Pickett?
Just welcome, and who were you pulling for in the World Cup?
Unfortunately, Spain.
And the penalty call?
Yeah, yeah, you got it.
Thank you. Mr. Murphy?
Best of luck, and, you know, I think it's a great thing for the town, and anything town can do to help, they will.
I echo your sentiments. We're really thrilled to have you here. I think you're going to be a great addition to Hyde Park.
Well, do you feel welcomed, I hope?
Should be.
I think this is working. Yeah, it's working now. Um, we're going to be also repping Hyde Park this weekend in La Grange at the Eats Hudson Invite Only Tournament, and we have seven teams performing, so.
Wow.
This is a, a big week for us. We're playing a lot of rival clubs from the area, and we hope to, you know, bring Hyde Park some wins and promote Hyde Park in a, in a professional manner.
Nice. Is that Stringham?
Yes, it's Stringham Park. Yep.
And you do notice your father is beaming at his son. You're very lucky.
My number one investor and supporter, you know. At the end of the day, he's, he's always got my back, so that goes a long way.
Before we read the resolution, classifying the action, declaring lead agency, et cetera, I just want to also point out, in terms of traffic, I forgot to make this point, but it was brought up by Ms. DeNapoli with friends of hers who have children who do the soccer, and also affirmed by the applicants and their consultants. There's a lot of car pooling when you do these tournaments, because they tend to be, they're teams, it's the same kids going over and over again. It reminds me of when I was a kid, and a different mom would take, you know, four or five kids or dad, whatever, each time to do this. So, you're, you're planning for, I think, the maximum number of cars that they all were individually going, is what it sounds like.
We're trying to create apples-to-apples relationship to what we've used before.
Thank you.
And it's really, even when you look at the ITE, it's based on a place that has an average number of ten fields. I mean, you just can't.
Wow.
Get any closer, but it seemed, again, apples-to-apples to what we had when we were with the board previously, so.
And I think in terms of what we're doing, if we, if we take a look at the worst-case scenario, that every family has their own car, then we're really taking a really hard look in case we have to defend this in court. We're also going to set the public hearing for.
August first.
August first.
August first. Yes, no?
We have to circulate for thirty.
I thought we would do it August first, so that.
Okay.
I'd like to get public comment.
Early.
Going on this, early.
Just given its history, it's probably a good idea.
Do you have time to do the mailing on that one? Okay, thank you.
There you go.
We've been overburdening her with public hearings, and she has to notify all the resident, and with this, there's a lot. Well, with this, there's a lot because of the, the nature of the site. Hidden Brook is a lot of houses over there. So, okay, who has this application? Hidden Brook is a lot of houses over there, so, okay, who has this application?
I do. Resolution classifying the action, declaring intent to serve as lead agency and to coordinate a review and referring to county. Real Olay FCLLC, resolution number 2018-42, whereas, 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 now therefore be resolved that the planning board hereby, one, classifies the project as an unlisted action under SECR, two, declares its intent to serve as lead agency and to coordinate a review of the project, and directs its secretary to circulate notice of its intent to all other involved and interested agencies, and three, directs its secretary to refer the, refer the site plan to the Dutchess County Department of Planning and Development pursuant to section 239-M of the general municipal law.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And how many, I think we were circling two-
One, two, three, four, five, six.
He did add say say.
Yep.
To the real one.
Yep.
So it needs six sets.
And how many, how many do we have of maps? Can you pass this down to Cynthia? Thank you. How many sets of maps did we need on that one, is it, the fire department? Fire and police don't need maps. Okay, you guys can resolve that out, and make it a motion to set the public hearing for August first?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Have a great couple of weeks, welcome again.
Good luck with your game, with your tournament.
Yeah, and good luck. Yeah, win.
Thank you, good to see you again. Be safe.
Yeah, I can't believe you were here, I thought Ken was going to come in with-
Jeez.
Yeah, no. Okay.
Okay.
Good to see you guys.
All right.
The next item on the agenda-
Michael.
Other business is a request for site plan waiver for Nesmith and Cardwell located Eight Fuller Lane. This is just for a front dormer, it's in the historic overlay district or the SAS, but it is not visible from either historic site or from the river, and we have a recommendation from the zoning administrator. Who has this file?
I do. Town of Hyde Park Planning Board, Danielle Nesmith and Peter Cardwell, Eight Fuller Lane, July 18th, 2018, resolution number 2018-38. Whereas, a request for site plan waiver has been made to the Town of Hyde Park Planning Board by Danielle Nesmith and Peter Cardwell to expand an existing dormer on a single-family home requiring a building permit, and whereas, 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 therefore be resolved that the Town of Hyde Park Planning Board hereby waive site, waives site plan requirements for the proposed changes as described in the building permit application received by the Building Department, May 30th, 2018.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries, the next item on the agenda is, I don't know how to say that name.
Lutkowski.
Lutkowski?
Lutkowski.
Lutkowski. This is a request for a site plan waiver, 21 Curry Lane, this is the home of, a former home of Ron and Patty Gouch. They're putting in a pool, it's behind the house, it will not be seen from the river or either historic site, we have a recommendation from the zoning administrator, who has this file?
It'd be me.
Yay!
His last one.
Resolution number 2018-40. Whereas, an application requesting a waiver of site plan has been made to the Town of Hyde Park Playing Board by Christopher Lutkowski, I'm going to go with that, on June 25th, 2018, for property located at 21 Curry Lane in the Town of Hyde Park, and whereas, 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 now therefore be resolved that the Town of Hyde Park Planning Board hereby waive site plan requirements for the file entitled Lutkowski regarding the specific request submitted June 25th, 2018, and in the building permit application filed June 12th, 2018.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The motion carries. The next item is Michael Farrar located 3 Cole Hollow Road. We keep having these, this is a site plan waiver for the oil tank located at the townhomes that are back behind greenfields.
Yep.
We have the recommendation from the zoning administrator, this is just multifamily, that's why it requires site plan. Who has this file? Yes. Is there any required fencing or anything for these things?
I believe the applicants have been offering to do screening of either a little fence or some landscaping.
And I will add-
It's not required, it's just offered if-
I ask that they do that.
Oh, okay.
It should be required.
Yeah, the HOA doesn't require it, or-
There is no HOA.
No HOA, okay.
Well, it's not the first one.
I, I will add, we tried to say to the entire HOA that doesn't exactly exist, if you would come in and just show us locations on all the sites where these could go, we could do it, and then you, they would have to come back each individual person, but there's not really an HOA, that's one of the problems, is it, it doesn't really exist.
Central.
Okay. So who has this file?
I do.
Okay.
Farrar 3 Cole Hollow Road, site plan waiver, town code section 108-9.4C2, July 18th, 2018, resolution 2018-39, whereas, 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 now therefore be it resolved that the Town of Hyde Park Planning Board hereby waive site plan requirements for the file entitled Farrar regarding the specific request as submitted in the building permit application received by the Building Department.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The motion carries, the last of these bigger resolutions is Minster Veterinary Clinic. Just in essence, Mr., Dr. Minster said he changed his mind, and wasn't going to put in the four landscaping-
Really? Shocking.
I can't believe it.
There were some remnants from the last time.
There were remnants. You have to go with it.
Oh, oops.
I'm not signing this.
Oops, okay, yes, so, do I need to read the entire resolution? All right. Resolution approving amended site plan, granting discretion rates, sign bonuses to increase maximum size of letter symbol graphic pursuit to town code section 108-24-2F2. Resolution 16-44E. Whereas, whereas, whereas. Can I just stipulate that we've all read this resolution before?
Yeah, we did.
And we just may change the last, okay. The only change is the last condition, number eight, has been modified to revision of sheet 103 with a note stating that the existing post-steminal fence on the western boundary of the site will be removed. Make it a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Otherwise, they all stayed the same, and thank you Cynthia for noticing that.
Can't believe our legal deal, so let me make sure he puts his name.
The next item on the agenda is- Thank you. Is a release of escrow, this would be resolution 18-E. I move that we release escrow for the following applications, SABI, Lot Line realignment, Crofton Muse Key Bank, Crofton Muse Rodenhause, Crofton Muse Two, Carriage Trails SWIP, Crofton Muse Road Inspection, and Mike's Auto Center.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
My goodness.
Did you have the front part of that written charts?
Yeah, I think I gave it with it.
No, this is old.
Yeah, that's it, because- The next item on the agenda would be a consideration to adopt the revised planning board bylaws. Those bylaws now reflect, we'll be meeting at 6:00 PM instead of 7:00 PM?
Yes.
Make it a motion to adopt the new ones?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And, could I get a motion to, oh, I should do this individually. Make it a motion to adopt the minutes for the planning board of April 18th, 2018.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
To approve the planning board minutes from May 2nd. Chan and Ann are recused, but we still have a quorum if the other five of us vote.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And approve the planning board meeting minutes for May 16th, 2018.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And the last resolution. Resolution recognized in the service of Chauncey Murphy III, July 18th, 2018, resolution 18-F. Whereas Chauncey, Chan, Murphy III has served fourteen years as a member of the planning board of the Town of Hyde Park, and whereas during his tenure on the board, Mr. Murphy served as distinction as a vice chair of the planning board, and whereas Mr. Murphy was always well-informed about and involved in board deliberations, and consistently provided sage counsel, and whereas Mr. Murphy was integrally involved in reviews conducted by the planning board and made himself available when revisions were needed to the town's 2005 adopted sign code, and attending numerous meetings to ensure modifications made would approve the review of new signage, and whereas the planning board of the Town of Hyde Park wishes to express its appreciation to Mr. Murphy for his unwavering and devoted service to residents, business, and property owners of Hyde Park, now therefore be it resolved that the board hereby extends its appreciation to Chan Murphy for his distinguished service to the town, his commitment to improving the operations of its planning board.
So moved.
I moved it, I moved it. Can I get just a unanimous second?
At all, yes.
Second. Yes.
And, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries, Mr. Murphy, we'd like to present you with a certificate.
Thank you all. It's been a pleasure to serve with you all. On my departing, I would like to give this advice, see if you guys can't push the sewer resolution through, because I think it's the future of the town.
Thank you.
I think that this, the detail in this town, if we don't get that sewer, is going to suffer greatly in the next ten years because of the internet, and if we, we won't have the taxpayers to pay. Because the school board, as so far as I've been here, which is only forty-nine years and eleven months, okay, hasn't lowered the taxes.
No, they haven't.
All right, so if we keep going up with the taxes, and there's no business to pay for it, the people are going to end up having to pay for it.
All of it.
And the businesses are going to suffer too, so.
And I, I'm personally going to take that valve, because I've been working with the sewer project all along, and I think, I personally believe we're going to get there. We may not get the biggest one that will extend all the way up here, because that's going to be up to the property owners, but I think we can at least get, start with a small centralized one, because of the amount of money we've assembled, we could do something, we can do something no matter what, but you're right, we're going to be a one-horse town until we get sewer.
We have, we have an opportunity with the Colonial Institute to do basically, in the restaurant business, what Beacon did in the art business. We have an asset that other people don't have. We could create a restaurant colony, which would help the hotels, the motels, and all the other restaurants in town, and I'm hoping that you guys can convince everybody in my absence, and some of the people that are here now, that this investment in the sewer is an investment in their business, regardless of what business they're in.
We'll take that charge.
Agreed, and by the way, I, we don't keep, I don't believe we keep records of this, but I don't think I can remember in my time at Hyde Park, which is only twenty-five years, there being a planning board member that served fourteen years. That's a long time.
I don't know.
We're coming up on it, we're coming up on it, we're coming up on it, but it's a really long time, and it's, like I said, it's a lot of dedication, and I like the fact that we always had your input, which is not always what everybody else's input was.
Right, no, my input is usually different.
But that's important, that's important.
Which is good.
I'm actually, it's, I spoke to a person who's been in the development community, who is also a chair of a planning board in another state, but was a developer, about her interest, because I thought, we, we need to have someone who has that kind of perspective to come back, to stay on the board, because ideally you have several different voices all coming together in unity at some point, but expressing their differences along the way.
Yeah, I think that business is the soul of the community, that when you have a strong business community, the, the rest of it all-